Thanks for taking the time.
Yeah.
I understand that. But you know, even with my duties, you are like... I know. So, but it's nice sometimes. I know.
Mark.
Yeah.
I think everybody got one. Thank you. Are you ready?
Have we talked to like...
Yeah, we've had.
How are you?
Yeah, I'll be able to do that.
Yes, yes.
He's so relaxed.
He's happy. He is. He really enjoys. He's not missing.
I don't think so.
But it's nice talking to him. So I'm like, you make that work. Okay, y'all ready? Thank you all very much for coming this evening and thank you for bearing with us and starting a little late. We had a very important meeting prior to this and we needed a little time. I call this administrative meeting of March 19th, this hybrid administrative meeting to order of the Board of County Commissioners. And I want to say that it is the first day of spring, vernal equinox. This is also my father's birthday. He would have been 98 today. And so before we do our moment of silence, I just want to remind everyone to think of those who we love, who are no longer with us. And then I'll lead the pledge. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please join me in the, and stand in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, by the nation, on the ground, in this world, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you all very much. Agenda item number three, announcement of additions or changes. And I know we, we have a couple, but I wanted to begin with my request, respectful request for a deferral of item nine C, Commissioner Casada's resolution of selection process of the county manager. And I wanted to say that this is really an important position. I think some of you have read the paper this morning and our, our point here is, is that we don't want to rush this very important decision. I feel that there is a need for, as a group, we need to arrive at a consensus for this important process to replace our, our well-loved and appreciated manager in Julie Morgasbaka. So I move deferral.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this, this is something that we have to move forward on in a way that I think I put together a rather well-thought-out procedure to move forward when we're looking at who really is going to be the mayor of Burnaleo County. You know, as we know, we always go through a public process. Even just recently, we've gone through a very public process for a deputy county manager, which is really someone who just runs a department. We're looking at somebody who's going to be running the whole entire Burnaleo County. And I thought that me and my staff put together a really comprehensive and, and, and really forward-thinking way of how we're going to involve people who don't get to vote for a mayor because they don't have a mayor, but who they have is a county manager that we appoint. And I think that they would want to be a part of that process. And that is why we moved this forward and, and respectfully hope that tonight would be more not a deferral, although most of my stuff gets deferred, that it would not be a deferral, but that it would be a discussion and that we would come to a census tonight if you have amendments. We definitely would, would look at amendments, especially if they're supported by staff on maybe some of the timeline or some of the other things that might be important to give this more time. But I think that we're definitely in the right position and the right spot to move something like this forward tonight. So with being respectful, I, I'm hoping that we will not defer this and that we will actually move it forward and start really looking at how we're going to move forward with the new county manager. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. And I just wanted to explain one more time that this is not in any way prolonging this process. This is bringing everyone together on this commission. It is the obligation of the county commission to appoint and approve a county manager. And I had reached out, as you all know, for input from all of the commissioners. And I have that input and we are moving forward to create a process that I believe we can use some of your comments, but these, this resolution is just your proposal. And so I think that it needs to be fleshed out further. And I promise that I will bring that back before the next meeting, April 9th. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. My concern with, with deferring this is we've got three months left before county manager is, is, leaves the county. And so I feel like, you know, a deferral in this manner is, I think the urgency is there. So I do support moving forward with this. Now, flushing it out as a resolution, I think is fair enough, but I do support moving forward with this.
Thank you. Commissioner Marbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm really excited that the county manager had already initiated a strategic planning process that is underway. And we have a whole person that the county manager hired and is talking deeply and interviewing departments and department members. I always think of as someone who's worked in, as a staff or county when I was a young person, that we miss out when we don't get to hear from the folks who work closest to the ground, I like to call it. So I'm excited about that strategic planning process, which he is moving on to be completed soon and how that can inform this position and for a thorough community process in, in a short amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say briefly that I think this is, this is a start. You know, Commissioner Casada has put, put forward his ideas for, for what he'd like to see in this process. But, you know, there are five of us that are part of this process. We're, you know, it's, it's an awkward position for that county manager, for any county manager, right? You have five bosses. But it's important for all of us to have input, not just one of us. I, I would point out that, that this resolution was only made available to commissioners at, you know, four o'clock on, on Friday afternoon. We did not have a lot of time to look at this. And, and then, you know, with that being said, there's, there's also a community process, right? I want to hear from the community what they think of this resolution, what's missing, what's needed, what's not needed. And I just want to point out, you know, we, we have a staff, our county manager supervises a staff of over 2,500 people. Those, those folks certainly have needs and desires that, that need to be incorporated into this process and, you know, an understanding of that, that management experience needs to be part of this. I, I just think, you know, this is a good start. And, and lastly, I want to also say that Commissioner Benson, I, I hear what you're saying there, but I also want to say to, to our management team that, that's here, that, that our county manager Morgasbaka has, has put in place, we've got a great management team. You know, we've got a lot of people here that, that I trust, that do amazing work. And I'm not at all concerned about, about the county and sort of the continuity of government, if you will. We've got great people here. And I know that regardless of what happens, they're going to, they're going to be here. They're going to carry this, this ship forward and they're going to continue to do the great work that they're doing. And it's more important that we get this right than that we get this rushed. That's not going to do us any favors. That's not going to do our constituents any favors and that's not going to do our community any favors. We need to get this right. And I think asking for two weeks for all of us to chew over the resolution that's been put forward, for Madam Chair to put together the input that she's taken in and for us to all, you know, listen to our communities, talk to our constituents about this, I think that, that we do ourselves right, we do our community right by doing that. I'll call for the vote.
All those in favor of deferral of item nine C, say aye and raise your hand.
Yes. Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
And that passes on a three-two vote. Another change, yeah, Commissioner Olivas.
I have one other commission change here. I would like to request a two-week deferral of item seven A for the Water Protection Advisory Board appointment. I have reviewed the, the application of this individual. It is a, you know, it looks like he's got some, some really good experience, but I just want to have an opportunity to talk to this individual and understand how he feels this experience will parlay into the work of the Water Protection Advisory Board. It is a very important board, so I would request a two-week deferral.
I'll second that.
Madam Chair.
Discussion, Commissioner Benson.
I'd like to request that we do not defer this. Again, this is, it's a at-large appointment. He's well-qualified. It is an appointment of the board and he, he has stepped up to serve, serve the community. So I, I see no need to defer it for two weeks, another, just another delay slowing down government. And so I'd ask not to defer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call the question, Madam Chair.
All those in favor of deferring item seven A from this agenda today signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Nope.
And that passes, three-two. And Madam County Manager, do you have any changes or to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. Just one change, item seventy under Economic Development, the I-40 Trade Port Corridor project coordinator to be deferred to the April 9th meeting and a vote is required for that change. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I move approval of that change to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments? Commissioner Benson.
Madam Chair, thank you. Why are, why are you asking that this be deferred, Madam County Manager?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, I'll let Marcos explain.
Evening, Madam Chair and Commissioner Benson. We're deferring this item just because there's some additional language that we need to add from the purchasing department. So there's nothing wrong with the contractor, the contractor, it's just some additional motion language that, that we need to add in.
What impact does that language have?
The impact gives the county manager the authority to sign off on any amendments or anything further that would be needed in the contract. And so it's standard language that we have included into our contracts.
Okay, thank you. So was this language just accidentally omitted?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Benson, correct. This was accidentally omitted and we apologize for the, I delayed it, this will cause.
Okay, thank you. No more questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'll call vote. All those in favor of the deferral as requested, item, oh, off of consent, seven D. Say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
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 And that passes. And so now we go to the approval of the agenda as amended. I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
It moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
No.
And that passes. Thank you. We move on to number four, proclamations. County Manager Julie Morgasbaka.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. So, you know, it's with a heavy heart, but, but, but it's, but it's bittersweet as well that knowing that Betty Valdez, our housing director, has announced her retirement. And I'd like to present an acknowledgement of her, but I do want to say something on a personal level. I remember 18 years ago when I met Betty and I was recommended by my boss at the time. He said, you know, you really need to meet Betty because we needed a housing director. And I remember we had lunch. It was, it was a Slate Street, I don't know what it was before, but it was there. And I was so impressed in so many ways about your accomplishments. And I was thinking, wow, she's, she, she's going to want to work at the county, so much experience, so respected in the community. And I'm just, I just want to say it's just been an honor, working with you, knowing you, being your friend. I am in awe of all the things that you've done and I'm very, very proud to have been, as a deputy county manager, you work directly for me. And as a county manager, we work, we still work together. And so I'd like to present this acknowledgement to you. So first of all, acknowledging Betty Valdez, who has served as director with Burnaleo County for 18 years, acknowledging Betty's passion for housing and supporting vulnerable members of the community, and acknowledging Betty Valdez has demonstrated unwavering commitment and dedication to addressing the housing needs of the residents of Burnaleo County, and acknowledging that Betty's expertise spans a variety of housing programs and that she has shared her knowledge and skills with other counties across the state of New Mexico. So not just Burnaleo County. Acknowledging that Betty worked to form the housing nonprofit and willingly took the voucher piece of the Community Connection Supportive Housing Program and helped to develop the policy and procedures for the voucher program. And acknowledging that under her leadership, Burnaleo County Housing Department has been a high-performing agency ever since she took the helm. We've always been looked at, Betty's advice has always been sought and I'm very proud of that, that anyways, she is just absolutely second to none. Acknowledging not only has Betty helped many families through the programs in which the housing department administers, she has also created a family-based atmosphere inside the department, lots of great potlucks, by the way, sharing her knowledge, love, teachings, attentiveness and support to all the housing staff. She is the definition of a leader and the staff will miss her dearly. Acknowledging that Betty leaves the housing department in an excellent position to effectively administer the urgent needs of those seeking affordable housing. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burnaleo Board of County Commissioners acknowledges Betty Valdez on her outstanding work and dedication to the citizens of Burnaleo County and congratulates Betty on her well-earned retirement, done this 19th day of March 2024 in Burnaleo County, state of New Mexico. Betty, would you like to say a few words?
There's some tissues over there outside of the...
Okay, this is really hard. I'm sorry. So I guess what I want to say is a lot of my staff is here.
Can you stand up?
That's where the thanks goes. You can't do things alone, right? Everybody up there knows that. So all of that is because of them. And that's really all I have to say, is you're in great hands. I'm leaving you in great hands. Thank you for all your support, Julie. I couldn't have done it without you. Thank you for all your support. Every time I came to any of you, you let me charge ahead, even when it seemed ridiculous, right? You're like, what? But you let me. And because of that, we, we've accomplished so much. We are leaders, every one of you, and I leave you that way. So I'm not gone, I'll be back. Just, I'm just up there, I'm watching. So thank you. I appreciate everything you've done for me.
Thank you, Betty. I wanted to also tell you how much we, we really appreciate you. We always talk about homelessness and what the problems we have, but it's a many-faceted solution or a challenge to address homelessness in our community. And you have done a huge part of, of addressing that, that problem with your affordable housing. So thank you very much for...
Madam Chair.
You're very welcome. Commissioner Benson.
Ms. Valdez, you're amazing. We're, we're losing a gem in you. Your staff is amazing and we are in good hands, but you also leave extremely big shoes to fill. And I, I just can't say enough, we, we, we don't have enough housing. We have such a high demand for affordable housing and you've been such a wealth of knowledge. I've learned so much just being able to work with you. And so I wish you well and God bless you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Marbo. Yeah, and then Commissioner Casada.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Betty Valdez. I appreciate you so much since I came on. You know, housing's been such a big thing and every time I'm in a bit of a panic, you bring it back to the ground and talk about what's possible and show me all the potential that we have within housing. And every time I've needed you to work with community, you've just been such an integral player. You lead with your just integrity and treat community as if they were your family. And that has made it just feel so good while we're in this crisis to have your calm and respectful demeanor to all of our families and communities. And your expertise is always, as we talked the other day, I feel like we're really losing such great expertise and I don't know how anyone can encapsulate that. So I'm glad we'll still have you on speed dial. But thank you so much for your years of service and for all the ways that you've made community in this housing crisis a calm, reliable approach that we can walk into. Thank you.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, we spoke the other day and I told you, please don't go nowhere. I'll just put it this way, you know, and any, anytime anybody reached out to my office, you know, we, we respond immediately to constituents and we always send, you know, requests for people who are dealing with housing situations, housing crises, you know, really you should have been the unhoused department because that's what you're really focused on. And how you responded and how your staff responded to my constituents is, is second to none. You're a prime example for me not to get in your way and tell you how to do your job, but to trust you for being the department head of your department. And you exemplify that, that I don't have to be involved. All I got to do is ask you that we need help in my district and it was taken care of. That's the kind of leadership that we've had at Burnaleo County, the time I, for the time that I've been here. And you're going to be sorely missed. Good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had an opportunity to talk to Ms. Director Valdez earlier today. And in the short time we've gotten to work together, I just want to say what an inspiration you are, your, your leadership. I learned very early on what a high-performing agency we have. You and your staff have just created a culture of excellence. We are recognized throughout the state as the, if not one of the premier housing agencies. And when there is a problem somewhere else, another smaller agency in the state that needs help, they call you. And I just think that that speaks volumes to your leadership and your staff and the team you put together and, and, and you've continued to make the program even better. You know, we use all of our, our voucher funds, you know, basically every penny. And that's something that very few agencies are able to do and it's, that's incredible. It speaks to your leadership and your staff that makes that happen. And you continue to innovate, you know, through the landlord rental, landlord assistance program for, for damages and stuff like that, that Commissioner Bartboa and Benson sponsored. You know, we're continuing to lead and innovate and start new, exciting programs that help us solve this crisis. And you've been there at the front on all of that. So thank you and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
So come on up, I think there's a...
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
That I forgot. My mom and my husband, a lot of late hours and... Thank you.
You get her back, dang it. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. We now move on to... We now move on to five A, Public Comment and Communications. Each person will have two minutes and you will be alerted about your remaining time. Each person will have two minutes, and you will be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you are speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. And to maintain order and decorum in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone, please keep to those two minutes. Thank you so much. And Julianne, please read the names.
Madam Chair, we have nine speakers this evening. We'll start with in-person, starting off with Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Bianca Insineas, followed by Genevieve Chavis Mitchell.
Jesus said, "Your heavenly Father feeds the birds; are you not of more value than the birds?" The awful truth is that millions have starved to death. For thousands of years, God did not feed them. Jesus said, "Not one sparrow will fall to the ground without your Father's will. You are of more value than many sparrows." But I say, are the many disasters and atrocities suffered by millions according to God the Father's will? Jesus told us to forgive seventy times seven, to always forgive. Jesus told us to be more forgiving than God, who sends people to hell? What loving human parent would send their son or daughter to never-ending torture? No pardon, no parole in hell. The Bible says, "The powers that be are ordained of God." Were Hitler and the Nazis ordained of God? Is the U.S. government that has murdered millions in Native America, Vietnam, Iraq, Afghanistan, Central America, Gaza ordained of God? When two nations are murdering each other in war, are both governments ordained of God? The Bible has some precious wisdom, much evil poison. If you read the Bible, read with extreme caution to separate its wisdom from its poison. I was a sincere, young, Christian preacher fifty-seven years ago, but I no longer believe in a fair, loving, parent God.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Bianca Insineas, followed by Genevieve Chavis Mitchell, followed by Elaine Hebert.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and County Commissioners, for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Bianca Insineas, and I'm the Executive Director of the South Valley Main Street. We work in partnership with Burn Leo County and the New Mexico Main Street to do economic redevelopment, community redevelopment on Bridge Boulevard and parts of Aslada. I'm also the Farm Market Manager for the La Familia Growers Market, which is a farmer's market housed at the doors of the Gateway Park. I'm here in support, and I'm excited that you all will be approving tonight a contract for our first construction project at the doors of the Gateway Park. We were allocated $410,000 from New Mexico Main Street, and after our allocation from the state legislature, that means that we've secured, working in partnership with you all, 1.9 million for some design improvements at the doors of the Gateway Park. It's an exciting project for me personally, because we initiated this project, we as the community came up with the concept. At that time, County Commissioner Stephen Michael Kusada had just been elected. We met with him, he attended our first community meeting. So from the inception to the conception to the funding to the design to the construction documents, we have been equal partners at the table, and we're very thankful for that. We'd like to thank you all as the County Commissioners and the previous iteration of the County Commissioners, County Manager Julia Morgasbaka, the New Mexico Main Street, our New Mexico State Legislative Representatives. Like to give a special shout-out to John Barney and Debbie Joan Magath. And last but not least, to Stephen Michael Kusada, Commissioner Kusada. As a Chicana who grew up in the South Valley, a product of the Mountain View community, a graduate of the Mountain View Elementary School, who's been doing environmental justice work, community-led economic redevelopment, thankful for your respect and recognizing my expertise as many people in my professional and academic career have not, but you have. So I want to send you a special thank you for leading, being a leader in community economic redevelopment.
Thank you, Ms. Insineas.
Thank you.
Elaine Hebert, followed by Ralph Hoffman, followed by Diane Reese.
By the way, it's World Water Day on March 22nd. Water for Peace, so. My name is Elaine Hebert, and my comments address certain aspects of the agenda, seven C, eight A, nine D, ten A, and eleven A. My comments are made also in context of the just-completed discussion on the update of the comprehensive plan. Question, will the actual ordinances, the subdivision ordinances, be adopted tonight without being integrated necessarily with the comp plan? There are multitude of economic development proposals and planning efforts underway. For instance, in addition to the ongoing development of the comp plan, several neighborhoods have been asked to participate in various meetings. UNM is doing its Community 2100 capstone visioning project for the next eighty years for the northwest sector of our county. The city has started the West Mesa and Northwest Mesa Community Planning Area assessments that have been postponed for right now, but they overlap with what the UNM is doing. Is the county involved in these activities? Is the current West Mesa planning being coordinated between the city and the county? The city is going to develop a major film and television production studio hub on Attrisco Vista Boulevard. The county is providing herbies tonight to array the technologies, which is to have a manufacturing of solar equipment on Attrisco Boulevard. This is county stop funds to widen Attrisco. And the county is seeking money for the Attrisco Vista location of the Trade Port Corridor. Now postponed, until next time. Are these being coordinated, say, with transportation plans? Especially when we look at Pasel de Volcan, and that is included in the discussion for the Trade Port. That plan will create a bypass that will dump onto 550 and will create more problems. So I'd like you to just integrate everything.
Thank you, Ms. Hebert.
Ralph Hoffman, followed by Diane Reese, followed by Marla Painter.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and other County Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. My name is Ralph Hoffman. I'm the owner and general manager of Kenny Brick Company. Kenny Brick Company's been located at 100 Prosperity Avenue in the South Valley in the Mountain View neighborhood since 1928. The Kenny family originally started it there, and in fact, most of the, a lot of the old-timers refer to the Mountain View area as Kenny Brick Company. We, everybody that I know wants Mountain View, wants improvements and embitterment for the Mountain View community. The difference is isn't how to come about doing it. There's a vote tonight on developing another sector plan. I'm not opposed to it, but I'm not in favor of it, in that I think there is more constructive and positive approaches to it. There's, in the past, when it was planned or tried to be implemented in the past, it was done very one-sidedly. In fact, Kenny Brick Company would not be in business if that sector plan was placed as written and was about to be voted on. I think more realistic approaches to actually meet as a community and figure out what can be done to do it. When you approve the sector plan, automatically set up an adversarial-type situation, and I think the only thing that can come up positively is if we have an open, honest, and realistic discussion. I'd like you to consider delaying, at least delaying the approval of the sector plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Diane Reese, followed by Marla Painter, followed by Rudolph Serano.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Diane Reese. I'm Chair of the Rio Grande Chapter of the Sierra Club, and also a South Valley resident. Here tonight to ask you, as you are evaluating the updated comprehensive plan, to keep a few things in mind, please. The most recent UNM-Bieber study, it lays out so well, the rationale that was used to approve, you know, the plan in the past was unrealistic and inaccurate. Many of us have been coming to these council meetings, I think it's close to ten years now that I've been attending. The Santalina development has a hugely outsized impact on this plan and also on the financial health of the county. Please consider this report. Don't fall into the sunk cost fallacy, please. It's a behavior that I, you know, sunk costs, we've already put so much in it, but don't throw good money away at bad, please. It's time to cut taxpayer losses. But above all, please keep in mind the water in this town and in our southwest area. I point out the village of Rio Verde in Arizona. It's a Scottsdale suburb. You've heard about it quite a bit in the news, I think, in the last six months. This development relied on trucked-in water. There were no local sources, they built anyway, and now the trucked-in sources have disappeared, and the town is just dying. Many people believe that that is the situation that'll occur in a few years if Santalina, as it was approved, continues. So please, I ask, send back that plan to the planning staff to assess, review Santalina based on more accurate data, the true cost of payer-funded services. The numbers don't add up, and the water is not there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese.
Madam President, and, or no, your Chair, aren't you? Chair of members of the Commission, I'm Marla Painter. I'm the President of Mountain View Community Action, which is a neighborhood association in the Mountain View neighborhood. We work closely with the Mountain View Neighborhood Association, and I'm here tonight to support Commissioner Olivas's Resolution Nine. It is exactly what needs to happen right now in our community. And most important, not most importantly, but one really happy part of this is the recognition that we need a park in our community. I don't know if you all know, but the property directly across from the community center, which is the only place the children have to go to after school in Mountain View, is zoned for industrial use, and it's for sale. And it will be sold, and it will be developed as an industrial facility across the street from where the children are after school every day and all through the summer. And obviously, that's not acceptable. However, it is acceptable under the current zoning rules and the current policies of city planning, I mean, sorry, county planning. So I encourage you to pass this resolution. It is exactly what we need, and it is the feeling of all of the Mountain View residents I've spoken to about it, that it is exactly what we need. It's not the end, but it's the start, and the sector plan is as well. And we want to get along with our business neighbors, and we think we can do both. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Painter. Apologies.
Chairman Barbara Bragg, members of the Commissioners. The people are the boss. You're not the boss, the people is. I'm the people, I'm the boss. The reason I'm not sitting where you're sitting is because my grandiosity narcissistic disorder is worse than yours. That being said, this is the brain of a transsexual man, a female, and a male. The only difference is that the male can imagine an erection, and the transsexual can't. Everything else is the same. If we can inject some neurons right here, then we can cure those children. But if you take their penis away, we won't be able to cure them in the future. That's what I oppose H7. It's nothing against anyone else, it's just against science. The other thing is, is science. You know, I'm still looking for support in phononics. Phononics is the study of waves, sounds. It's something we don't investigate anymore, and we're starting to put money on it, and it's bringing us a lot of, a lot of good news. You know, God says in the Genesis, you know, "Let it be light," and the light was created. Everything was a voice before its matter. And that's, that's the good news. This is bringing me a little bit of pull from people that thinks that, you know, I'm supporting anything other than science, but I'm just following the science, you know? And that's what the research is going on, and I need your support, you know? Now I'm doing casinos, but I don't know if I'm going to get casino support or not. I hope I do, but have a great time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have one speaker on via Zoom, Mr. Gerardo Cionello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm just learning how to use this thing in a cell phone. So good evening, Madam Chair and County Commissioners, and thank you for serving our communities. I am an alternative health doctor and minister. First, our prayers and support to late State Police Officer Justin Hare and his family, and to our current Burn Leo County Sheriff deputies and law enforcement officers, that they all get home to the family's safety and alive every day. So now we need to talk about the fact that seven million people are crossing the southern border illegally. We need to be talking about the fact that a young college student in Georgia was killed by an illegal immigrant, and a nine-year-old in Texas was raped and killed by an illegal immigrant, according to news reports. My client from Mountaineer, New Mexico, came to see me, and she told me that she had to detour away from South Broadway because of the shooting going on in the area. And I wonder if any of those shootings involve illegal immigrants and the catch released criminals. Some of you know that I waited nine years to become a naturalized American citizen legally, and I have spoken to several of my Asian-Americans who were naturalized legally, and they're angry and frustrated with the biased immigration policy. Now, do you, as County Commissioner and the Sheriff, have a policy and plan of actions to prevent any crimes such as killing of Officer Hare, trafficking of drugs of humans, and sexual exploitation by illegal immigrants in our border crisis? But I'm not here to tell you that we didn't warn you. In Acts 22:3, "A sensible person perceives danger and takes precautions, but the gullible people continue on and suffer the consequence in our ponders." And thank you, and may God bless you and Burn Leo County.
Thank you, sir.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you all. So that goes, takes us to item six, approval of minutes. I move approval of the March 5th, 2024 administrative meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
And that's approved. Moving on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for items seven C, E, F, and G?
Yes, ma'am. Seven E is FR 2024-30. F1 is FR 2024-31. F2 is FR 2024-32.
Madam Clerk, before you continue, item seven C, if you could restate
Oh, I went all the way up. I missed you, didn't I? Sorry. Okay, thank you. AR, G, C is AR 2024-29.
Thank you.
And then And then down to FR 2024-30, FR 2024-31, FR 2024-32, G is FR 2024-33.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, the consent agenda has been published and made available to the public, therefore I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that passes. We move on to Item 8, Adoption of Ordinance Amendment to the County Code. Madam Clerk, can you please issue an ordinance number for Item 8A?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 2024-9.
And Technical Services Director Brian Lopez to present.
Madam Chairman, excuse me, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, good evening. I'm Brian Lopez, the Technical Services Director for Public Works. And for this item, I'm actually gonna hand it off to my Natural Resources Manager, Dan McGregor, because he's the one that put in all the work to put all this stuff together, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mr. McGregor.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Stan McGregor, Public Works. So, I really appreciated Ms. Hubbard's comments during public speaking in terms of the relationship between the comp plan and the subdivision ordinance. And I would just refer you to page 249 of the draft, and I'll just read verbatim, because it really sets up the discussion about the subdivision ordinance. "The water rights requirements and technical development standards regarding water supplies are addressed in the county's subdivision ordinance. For water supplies from an existing system, require an availability statement from the intended supplier. For new supplies, a water assessment is required and includes providing proof of water rights, hydrogeologic reports, and analysis and demonstration of a sustainable 70-year water supply. The 2023 amendments to the subdivision ordinance will require strengthened hydrogeologic reports to consider climate variability and to decuris recharge in demonstrating proof of a 70-year water supply." I'd also specifically call out that there is a new provision that strictly prohibits approval of subdivisions based, or residential subdivisions based on hauled water. So, just in response to the public comments, teeing it up and going with it from there. So, the proposed amendments were first approved for publication at the October 10 meeting. We then requested a second publication at the December 12 meeting. Originally, these have been brought back at the February 6 meeting and were deferred at Commissioner Olivas's request. I believe we've settled those issues to your satisfaction, sir. And so, no further changes than what have been published. So I am asking for a motion for approval of the proposed subdivision amendments. Thank you.
I move approval, and I really want to thank you for your hard work and your ability to be flexible and answer questions and respond to the public comment today. Very important. Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Madam Chair, just for the record, there's no signups for the poll here.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. McGregor and Director Lopez for their working with me and, you know, working through the issues, and I think that we've got a really good product here and happy to support it.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Barba.
I just had a question, so, just so I understand you correctly, to your answer to some of the public comments, was that hauling water is not an option for some, for a subdivision?
For a residential subdivision, and the reason for that specificity is if we're talking about an agricultural subdivision that somebody's wanting to do for ranching purposes, we, it may not make sense to require the well if they're wanting to haul water for their cows or whatever. So we've specified it to residential subdivisions.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Call the question. All those in favor, signal, I have a saying, aye.
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 Thank you, ma'am.
Move on to Item 9A. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for 9A and 9B? Yes.
Yes, ma'am. 9A1 is AR 2024-34. 92 is FR 2024-35. B is AR 2024-36.
And D, sorry, is that right? And 9D, I'm sorry, I didn't say that one.
AR 2024-37.
Okay, thank you. Moving back up to 9A, Julianne Baca had a statement to make on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So before we go into presentation of 9A, I will be requesting approval of a floor substitution. Both the sponsor and staff settled on a version last Friday that was uploaded but did not make its way into the final agenda packet. It was an application error. So at this time, if you all approve the motion to accept the floor substitute, we will reflect it on the overhead. It'll be made part of the permanent record for this meeting and also posted on the after-action form. And then, I am more than happy to go through each amendment, or we'll defer to Legal, who is also prepared. However, to make it into the record, it'll be sufficient to be posted on display and then also in the minutes, and I can bring that up now.
Yes, please bring that up. And has each Commissioner received the floor substitute?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they all have a copy of the red light version, along with the version as published and to be published.
Do you want to move approval of the floor?
Move approval of the floor substitute?
And do we hear the presentation?
Yes, and so-
Yes, before, now we're considering the sub.
Correct, yep. Well, you have to vote on the floor substitute and then go into the presentation for final adoption.
Thank you very much. So all those in favor of the floor substitute being submitted, say aye.
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 Thank you. So, we're gonna get that on the-
It's, oh, thank you. And Commissioner Olivas, as sponsor, I defer to you.
Okay, thank you, Julianne, Madam Chair. I'm just gonna go through this quickly. Really, the changes that were made here were all based on staff input. Our great folks in the Technical Services Group, as well as PROS and PDS, did take a look at this resolution and offered some really, you know, good comments that I think just improved the language and really made this a little bit more specific and more to the effect that they feel that it's implementable, that this is something workable and something that the department can achieve and achieve in a realistic timeline. So, I'll just give the broad brush of what this resolution does. This response to, you know, to concerns in the Mountain View community that we've all heard about, you know, I've heard about this my entire life. There have been in the past, you know, and continue to be certain pollution issues in that area. It's a real concern, it's a real problem. There are superfund sites in that neighborhood. There are other well-documented, you know, environmental hazards in that area, and those are hazards that, as we had some public commenters discuss, there are, you know, children that live in that neighborhood, there's families that live in that neighborhood, there's also businesses that operate in that neighborhood. And not every business there is a polluting business, you know, and those employees, and the employees frankly, of the businesses that do have an environmental impact, they all deserve to be safe in the environment that they're in, whether they live there, work there, play there, whatever it is. People deserve to be safe where they're at and have their health with them when they go home at night. And so, this is really just about documenting those issues, really aggregating all of the data right now. You know, you've got the New Mexico Environment Department, we've got some work that our Natural Resources Division might be doing down there, we've got work that the EPA is doing down there. We've got all these scattered sources of information, and what this proposes is really a robust environmental survey to aggregate all of that data, talk to the community about that aggregation, about what the community knows that may or may not be on our radar, on the radar of those entities I listed. I work with other agencies in the area, you know, we've got the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Water Utility, right? There's a lot of entities that operate in this neighborhood, and we want to have a really collaborative process to bring everybody together, aggregate that data, and have that publicly available so that everybody knows what they're getting into. If you're buying a parcel of land down there, that's available for prospective purchases. If you're building a plant or a business, a shop, whatever it may be, that ought to be available, right? That's, that's one of the core functions of governments, keep people safe and let people know what's going on in the area. So, this response to that concern and allows the county manager through our Technical Services Division to enter into a contract with a firm, if needed, to do this work, you know, obviously, it's very technical work, right? Understanding that, and I think we've got great staff on board, Natural Resources Division, Technical Services Division, that can do a lot of this, that gives them the resources to make sure they can complete this project and have a work product we could really be proud of. The second thing that this resolution does is address the concerns that I've heard from the community, I'm sure many of us up here have, that, you know, this is a frontline community that really lacks a lot of public investment. We have a community center there that we just renamed, and that's about it as far as county-level resources there. Yes, there's the Valle de Oro National Wildlife Refuge there, there is the Rio Grande Bosque, but that's a very different green space than a park, right? You don't play soccer in the bosque, right? It has, you know, the bosque is a beautiful place, a wonderful place to recreate, but they're very different. And the folks in this community deserve to have the same level of resourcing that so many of us enjoy in our neighborhoods, and it's about time that we make this right. So, this really endeavors to start the process, this is by no means an end, right? This is putting together a resource for the community, and it's, it's starting the process of building that recreation resource. But by no means is this the finish. We're gonna have to keep at this, to resource this park, to continue to follow up on the action items in the survey, what are the things that we can address and should address. And with that, I'll be happy to stand for questions or comments from fellow Commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, since this is in my district, you know, I think that this is something that the, you know, the neighborhood should have. You know, I believe the park is a good start. The one point, the 1 million may or may not purchase the land. We just purchased a section in there for a pond, which was $1.5 million for the parcel that we bought, just to put a pond in there just recently. So, I think this is a start, and, you know, I'm hoping that when I'm gone, that, you know, Vice Chair Olivas will continue to keep advocating for the money to actually follow through with the park, the design, the build, which would probably end up being somewhere around the ballpark of about 3, 4 million dollars. So I'm hoping that happens, because I'm at the end of my term, and so, I'm appreciative of it. I just do have, I just do have one comment, though, based on comments earlier. When did you submit this?
This was submitted, I believe it was Thursday evening. This was submitted to Julianne maybe two weeks ago. We started working on it, we got some edits back from Julianne and her staff, and then this was submitted to Technical Services probably about a week ago, two weeks ago, around that same timeline. I also provided you and your staff copy. We did incorporate a lot of the edits that you and Mr. Noriega suggested, and, yeah, I think the final version was submitted to Julianne Thursday evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I would just like to express strong support for this. Being an old parky, I'm all about putting parks where they ain't, and I think Mountain View is very deserving of some more green space. The children there, you know, and adults, families need this kind of improvement, and I'm 100% in support. We are also talking with our counterparts at the city, and there is a possibility that Council Penya is interested in participating. We don't, we don't have an agreement, but that's, that's good news, too. I mean, I think people have recognized the need in this community, so I'm in favor.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
The, I think this ties back also to the comprehensive plan that we saw earlier, and just, I think, highlights the excellent work that the county is doing. And so, in spite of the late submission this was given to us, I still support it, because Mountain View, I have had a chance to read the final copy, and, yeah, Mountain View needs it, so, yep, I'm in favor.
Any other comments?
Move approval.
I'll second that. Did you want to second?
Sure, I'll second it, yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
It's been moved by Commissioner Olivas and seconded by Commissioner Casada. All those in favor?
Aye, yes.
Apologize, let me get back over here. So that's the, item B, are we on?
A.
Sorry.
Now we're going to B.
Now we go to B, okay. Apologize for the changes. Mountain View Neighborhood Sector Plan, Resolution AR 2024-31, sponsored by Commissioner Olivas and Commissioner Casada. Who wants to go?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for working with me on this. I just, you know, we just want to really iterate the facts that, you know, a sector plan isn't gonna go in and downzone any properties or looking at how we're gonna change zoning in any way. What we're looking at is looking at how to put a plan together so we can attract other types of industry, other types of job opportunities. And as you know, this is also probably tied into our comp plan as we move forward. And really, it's not to, you know, hurt any of the zoning whatsoever. So if that's something that you feel that we're doing here, that is not what's happening here. What's happening here is my commitment to the community to protect what kind of industry comes in and what kind of incentivizes we could do to other industries that come in that are non-polluting industries in those areas. We're working with Marcos with Economic Development to look at how we can incentivize these properties to bring in industries. We're just looking at how do we change the landscape of Mountain View. So if you've been in Mountain View all these years, then you know that that has kind of been historically earmarked for, you know, the polluting type of industries, whether it's ground or whether it's air, those are the things that tend to draw to that area. And what we're trying to do is incentivize through a sector plan, bringing in different types of industries, making it more, like I said at the last meeting, making it look more like the Journal Center, right? So when you look at the Journal Center, it has, it has some asphalt plants and it has some stuff in it, but mostly it has opportunities for small businesses, plumbing companies, things like, things of those nature. And it looks beautiful, and it looks great. And so when you fly into Albuquerque and you come down Sunport Boulevard, you're gonna be looking at a city that looks like it is growing, that it is, that is moving in the right direction, and it doesn't look like it looks right now. It doesn't look like a city where somebody really wants to come and do business when you see it right off the airport. And that has been my commitment to the community since I started, is to look at what kind of industries come in, and I'm happy that staff and Commissioner Olivas has listened to how we want to do this and how we're gonna move it forward without doing anything illegal. We are gonna do everything on the up and up and how, and what the powers that gives us to move forward in order to do what's right for not only the business community there, but for the historic people who have no choice but to have lived there their whole entire life, right? As we look at what affordable housing is, people can't afford to move. The cheapest house that you could buy, which is in the area I live, is $280,000. So nobody really can afford to move out of their homes, especially if they come from historic homes. So the only way we could really help this community is by being their partner, working with the business community. We're not just doing this on our own. We're not passing something here tonight saying it's gonna be set and sewn. What we're telling you is, we're opening up this, we're putting this forward so we can really start opening up how it's gonna look, who we're gonna work with, and if you were, if you heard about what we just did with the comprehensive plan, you will know staff will not do this half-heartedly, that they will do this with the utmost integrity and make sure that every stakeholder is involved. So with that saying, with that being said, I'll turn it over to the co-sponsor, Mr. Olivas, Chair, Vice Chair Olivas.
Well, well said, Commissioner. Well, well said, Commissioner. I want to emphasize that last, last point. I know some of the folks in the audience may not have been here earlier during our comprehensive plan discussion and presentation. And what was remarkable to me is, is that we had a lot of neighborhood leaders, you know, folks that, that really pay attention to this kind of stuff and have experienced in the past government really leaving them behind, not listening to them, not incorporating what they're talking about, complimenting, going out of their way to attend our hearing and complement the process that the county ran. And I, I think that that speaks really well to what is coming with this sector plan and the fact that we have a county planning staff from our director on down that is dedicated to making sure that the community is listened to. And that means the whole community, not just the residents, the property owners, business owners, everybody that's vested in that community. I, I truly believe will have a seat at the table and will be part of this conversation. Again, I want to be clear, this, this takes no action to downzone, rezone. This sets in motion a, a plan to, as Commissioner said, incentivize alternatives to development, you know, give property owners more options and open up the possibilities for, for this area. But if you choose, you know, then, then nothing changes. And that, that's what's really important is that this is about using the tools, using the incentives we have at our disposal to try to do right by this community and try to do right by property owners, you know? I think it's, it's really clear as, as Commissioner laid out. Property in, in Journal Center is a lot more valuable than property in Mountain View, acre for acre. And so in the end, I truly believe that this type of process, this type of incentive, you know, the, the type of 50-year plan here, the outlook, is actually to the benefit of not just the residents, but the industrial property owners and the folks that, that, you know, own the, the fuel terminals and the plants and the ground underneath them stand to see a real benefit from this area developing into, you know, higher tech, greener, cleaner industry. I think it's a win-win. And, and we never want to demonize any kind of industry. Look, I, I live in a brick house that's probably kidney brick. You know, this is the neighborhood that built Albuquerque, right? This is the neighborhood that built our community. And we don't want to lose sight of that. I'm a contractor, you know? I, I work with my hands every day. And it's not about demonizing that kind of work. It's not about saying that, you know, we don't want to point fingers and, and, you know, make blame here. This is about moving forward. This is about what does the future look like? And, and how do we envision a future where our whole community is represented? And, and that includes both sides of the, the tracks here, so to speak, the residents and the, the businesses. And I think that's what this does. And I just want to commend Commissioner Casada for, for stepping up on this. You know, it's been a long time. It's been a long time coming that, you know, a lot of commissioners have not, previous commissioners in this seat have, have not taken an interest in, in representing the Mountain View community. And I think this is, this is really great. And I just want to urge my colleagues' support here.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
I just want to add one more thing, just the, and this goes back to the development of Mountain View, the residents, that sector plans are a good thing. And we had a lot of opposition to Santalina, but that's a sector plan. This is a sector plan. And what that does, it, it just stops unmitigated development, whether it's urban sprawl homes or just industry growth. Water rights are, are implemented. Speaking of trucking water up, water is reliant, or Santalina would be reliant on the water authority. That's part of the sector plan, instead of trucking it up, which nobody wants. And, and ultimately, and we, we've seen other examples like Commissioner Olivas talked about, it benefits the community. So yeah, this, I think this is a good thing. And there'll be some growing pains, but I think in the end, the, the entire city will be better for it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Olivas and Commissioner Casada for bringing this important work. I just wanted to comment that, you know, it wasn't until I was a college student that I learned that there's a name put to what we've been doing in Mountain View, right? Environmental injustice, environmental racism. When we looked at our, this very beautiful thorough comprehensive plan, it's really clearly names the identities, the level of education, the race that, of that prioritize that are populating these districts. And Mountain View has the largest number of communities of color, Hispanic specifically, has some of the lower education and the lower income. And it's not a surprise, right? That that's been also where we've decided to place all our toxins and pollutions and pollutants and industries that do that. I agree that we need a balance. And I'm so thankful that if we can find a balance, this is going to be a way to overturn those injustices that have been and head for a, a community that acknowledges both, right? That we need those industries and we need places. But those communities also deserve parks and industries that's going to make their communities attractable and, and raise their values. So I just, I'm really thankful for this move to both the commissioners bringing it forward.
And, and I too, just very briefly, want to, want to thank the both commissioners for bringing this forward. I believe in sector planning. I think that it helps and it lifts everyone up. It is a systematic, thorough mechanism that we have to improve a community. And so I am, I'm very much in favor of it. We did fund our planning department, or we are going to be funding our planning department to do this kind of proactive planning. And so thank you both for, for bringing this forward. Director Hamm, did you have a comment?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I, I guess I couldn't help myself and approach the podium, but I, I think that all of your sentiments are well-taken. The commentary about trying to find a solution here that benefits all parties is really how we're going to undertake this. You saw earlier this afternoon, the way the county's planning department undertakes these initiatives is community first. And that starts with listening to folks, everyone involved, recording their involvement and making sure that we incorporate their needs and their vision into the document that we produce. I'm going to tether this a little bit to process. There's a timeline associated with the resolution. Once the comprehensive plan question is put behind us, however that transpires to be, this is the first thing that the county's planning department intends to undertake. So, you know, I, I'm, I know that we, we deferred, or excuse me, we continued the comp plan deliberation this evening. And just from a practical operations perspective, as soon as that process is completed, this is the next thing that we're going to do. And to thank the board for the potential future of having additional resources, we will deploy those in the best and most effective manner that we are aware of. And just to remind folks that the, the county is the only land use framework in the region that still allows for sector planning. Our, our city partners, they just had to go a different direction. So the county's comp plan and the county's framework is what would enable us to be doing rank-three sector planning in this community. I'll stand for questions. Thank you, folks.
I guess I would just say that on the, on the budget question, Nick, you know, and I know that you, the comprehensive plan is being done internally. There is a real option of, of outsourcing this and getting a fine planning firm to, to move this forward, to keep with this schedule that is in this resolution now. And so I'm, I'm hoping that we can do both. We can continue, we can get this going. I think the community needs it.
Madam Chair, I agree. It's a, it's a desperate need that's long overdue. And as soon as I have the, the staff availability to be able to do this, once we put that project behind us, absolutely, we'd undertake it.
Commissioner Casada, you want to close?
Yeah, I'll just move for approval.
Okay.
Second? Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We move on to 9D, Capital Improvement Program, presented by Chief of Government Affairs Kathy Court. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners. I believe I am joined via Zoom by Mr. John O'Donnell, our federal lobbyist. He's here to support and help me answer any questions that you might have about the work that we have done together and with staff and with your assistance as well. The motion before you is to approve administrative resolution establishing the county's 2024 federal policy priorities for the 118th Congress, Second Session of the United States of America. I'm sure you read the summary that I provided to you in your packet. But in a brief overview, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Pagonas, and I started this work at the beginning of January. We had planning meetings in the fall, but we had two department meetings and meetings with you all, commissioners and elected officials back in early January to kind of lay out the process by which we determine what our federal policy priorities are for this coming year and what might our earmark request be for this year. So after those meetings, I did something a little different this year. I asked all of our department directors to answer a very short survey telling us what kind of federal programs and grants that our departments are reliant on or pursue on a regular basis. And it actually was a really great way to dig deep into what departments are doing and what they need at the federal level, the kind of support they need at the federal level. So with that being said, the results of the department feedback and meetings that I had with congressional staff in Washington DC in February really helped Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. O'Donnell and I kind of winnow down what our federal policy priorities are for this year, should be for this year, and what our earmark requests can be for this year. And so your resolution before you is pretty much divided into two sections. The first section, I laid out all of the 12, a total of 12 federal earmarks. Six of those come from Burnley County. Six of them come from the Burnley County Sheriff's Office. And our congressional delegation staff absolutely understands that the sheriff is an elected official. He has asked for six federal earmark requests. I am working with him. I'm going to support him in those requests. But it's also, he understands that there might be that possibility that the congressional delegation says you need a, you need to winnow down your list. Six is too much. And so we've got those prioritized by one through six, with his top three priorities being the ones that we're very likely to help him submit in the final application process. And then we've got six other earmark requests that our departments are requesting that we make. Just so you know, this year's process is a bit different than it has ever been before. Senator Lujan and Senator Heinrich, because Congress has had a budget impasse and it really has delayed the, the formal earmark process this year. So we are still waiting for final guidelines and deadlines for when we can submit our federal earmarks. So with that being said, Senator Heinrich and Senator Lujan did open up their applications for vetting purposes. And they wanted to see all of our earmark, potential earmark requests. And so Senator Heinrich, he had his application portal open through March 8th. So all 12 of these items were submitted to his staff. Senator Lujan's portal has been open and is still accepting all applications for vetting purposes. And we completed all 12 of those applications earlier this week.
Excuse me, Kathy, just for the, for the purpose of the public, do you, do you have those, that, those listed or can you?
The, the list is part of your resolution.
Yes, but I mean, for the public who are watching.
Oh, I see.
So that they know.
Would you like me to list them? Just name them?
Maybe just, maybe just by the title is fine.
Sure. Okay, sure. So we have six from the county. The first is a housing single-site project on Sixth Street and Cole that is geared towards senior housing for low and middle income, medium income seniors. Number two is our Keep New Mexico Alive Expanded Campaign to create a youth speakers bureau that addresses substance use prevention for all of Burnley County youth. Number three is our I-40 Trade Port Corridor. We're, we're requesting 2 million for design purposes. We've got a lot of grants that we're applying for to help kick off the I-40 Trade Port. And this is just one of those efforts. So a 2 million request for I-40 Trade Port. We've got a request for a youth services center intensive outpatient program for step, for, for adolescents with substance use disorders. We've got a request for Bridge Boulevard Phase 3. I am really happy to say that our Atrisco Vista Boulevard earmark request last year has made it through Congress and we're waiting for final approval by the president. Because of that, we have taken Atrisco Vista off of our earmark list this year. And we're putting in Bridge Boulevard, which is our technical services number two project. And finally, the county's Street Tree and Green Stormwater Infrastructure Project. This comes from Mr. McGregor's Natural Resources Team. So this is project number six. And then I've also listed for you the Burnley County Sheriff's Office priority request, earmark request. Number one being vehicle acquisitions. Number two, technology for crime prevention. Number three, their violence intervention program. We did receive a state grant just two weeks ago to start a violence intervention program here in Burnley County, working jointly with APD. So he's asking for some money for that new program. Next is his Regional Training Academy Shooting Range Turning Target System. Please don't ask me what that is. I'm just reporting it. I have no idea what that is. And a cellular site simulator is number six. And a live fire shoot house is his sixth request. And again, the last three, I really don't know too much about. I'm just supporting him in his efforts. So, so those are 12 total earmark requests that we are, we have submitted to Senators Lujan and Heinrich as part of their vetting process. We're waiting for communications from them, feedback from them, to tell us what they think of those, where, where do they think they sit? Do they have potential? And then from there, we can decide, once we have final deadlines set by Congress, we'll be able to decide where all these earmark requests go in terms of our representatives as well. Right now, we haven't submitted any to the representatives. I'm kind of waiting for guidance from the senators' offices first. Our second half of the resolution basically goes through all the federal programming that we really rely on here at the county. I divided this into several sections. Our Community Economic and Workforce Development Arena. We've got Environment, Energy and Public Lands Priorities and Justice, Health and Human Services and Public Safety Priorities, telecommunications and transportation priorities. I'm happy to answer any questions about any particular priority that's listed here on the resolution. And Mr. O'Donnell is obviously here to help me also answer any questions that I might not be able to answer right away. So I stand for questions.
Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Olivas has a question.
Not really a question at this point. I think all my questions have been answered on this, but I think this is a really good list. It's relatively concise. You know, I think that having that listing of all those federal programs that we utilize is, is helpful. And in reality, you know, our list is just these, these six plus the sheriff's six, which is a pretty reasonable amount, I think, for, for the size of our delegation. And I want to say, you know, none of these projects are, are in District 5, but I think this is terrific. I support all of these projects. These are things that, that we really need to do. The South Valley Green Stormwater Infrastructure is a great project. Bridge Boulevard, you know, something that, that our staff have been working on for a long time. The Trade Port, just got a briefing on that yesterday. And I think that has potential to be a really exciting project that, that our community is taking the lead on, really leading nationally, regionally, you know, working with other states and other municipalities. It's, it's an exciting project. And of course, you know, leading with housing and substance use, which are just the, the biggest challenges in our community. I, I think it's a smart list. It's, it's diverse. And, you know, I hope we can, we can have some of these, hopefully all of these. So happy to support this.
Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you so much. And I do, I have a quick, well, I, I appreciate the top six. And I just want to really, you know, thankful for number four that really tries to set our, our youth services center to be an actual services center, right? Where we're providing services as an intensive outpatient program. So we're not just housing and detaining folks, especially young people, pre-adjicated youth. So I'm really grateful for that as one of the top six priorities. My question, and I think we talked a little bit about it, but I don't, like, for the other federal priorities. So this list, I'm assuming just goes, like you said, you sent the six to the senators. I don't know. I don't know what happens with these other federal priorities. Are they also eventually sent on and then also to our representatives and?
Thank you, Commissioner Barboia, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners. Really what we're doing with the rest of this priorities list is really highlighting the programs that they should be aware of when they're discussing budgets and programs that fall under these categories. We want them to know that, you know, Burnaleo County and New Mexico really, you know, really needs these programs. We really need this funding. We can't take cuts in these programs. And so this really kind of helps them in terms of, you know, they're the ones sitting on these committees, discussing budgets for all these different agencies. And so this is really a list to help them understand, wow, we can't be cutting this because Burnaleo County relies on the funding under this program or under this agency. So that's really what this is for.
Okay, great. That's, that's more clear than I've heard it before. Thank you, that. We already get most of these, and we rely on them, and we really need them to know that they can't cut this. The part that I also, so for item one B, there's a, and we discussed a little bit about this. I don't know if Mr. O'Donnell might have some pieces to say, but it seems like there's been a system, a break in the system that isn't allowing us to still access those funds, and it includes our state, and then it's, but, and the federal government's running as it's always, as it always has, but the changes at the state have not allowed us to ask, access those housing funding. So is, I guess I'm just like, as somebody who's also done grants development, like, you know, is this request asking them to try and find a fix to that problem? Is it the federal government's responsibility to find a fix to that? Sounds like, from what I read, it's a state problem. I'm just, I just want to make sure we're not barking up the wrong tree and other things.
Thank you, Commissioner Barboia. This actually was broached with our Senate, our congressional delegation when I sat with them and Mr. O'Donnell, and they were quite kind of shocked that CDBG, CDBG funding has been limited to just infrastructure projects here in New Mexico. So the reason why it stayed is because they actually told me that they would be happy to pick up the phone and call DFA and ask why, and can they expand CDBG funding to housing and infrastructure like it used to be in the past. And just a little background on this, because I really had to kind of dig in and understand this a lot more from our outgoing retiring Ms. Betty Valdez. But we did get a CDBG grant back in 2019 when the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority managed that pot of funds. It's, it's pass-through funding. It comes from the federal government to the state and then to NMFA. So we got that $500,000 grant. That money was used to complete the project that we just got a news release on last week. The project was completed at El Centro and Seabolt Villages. We couldn't apply for CDBG funds because we already had them until we could expend them. So when we wanted to reapply for those fundings, that funding source in 2023, it was no longer a valid way to apply. So in other words, they had taken housing off the list as, as, as a, an application. So this is why it's here, because Ms. Valdez and her team were like, where did this go? We used it, we need it. And she hasn't been able to get answers as to why they eliminated housing as an option for this funding, so.
Thank you so much. I think our folks that have been do, working on that housing collaborative are good to know that, too, and should try and make some calls as well if we're not. And I have one more question out of chair. Number three, the justice, health, and human, thank you again for this important one about justice involved. Is this in here because, again, I know you said these are just the ones we already utilized, the termination of Medicaid to not be terminated, but more to be suspended so that we can, so that folks aren't dropped from care because of even sometimes really short stints in, in the jails or juvenile detention center? So does this, is this asked on here just to, again, recognize that it's needed? Or is, is there already been any cha, I just want to make sure there's not any changes to, we are still providing, just suspending people's Medicaid in the jail system, not terminating?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Barboia, yes. This is just one of those things we want to alert our delegation that this is really important to us. Don't mess with Medicaid and how we use it in our jails and for our population. So that's really where this comes from.
Thank you so much.
Just want to make sure that.
Any other questions, Ms. Court?
Move approval?
It's been, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, did you have a comment? I'm sorry. You got it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
Inanimate, thank you.
He was up late today.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you.
We move on to approvals. Finance presented by Denise Benavides.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Denise Benavides. I'm the principal financial analyst for the finance division. So you have a few motions in front of you. As you recall, the commission approved the analysis and feasibility of $3 million earmarked for the Gateway Center at the October 24th administrative meeting. The ARPA team completed and submitted the analysis to the ARPA core team. An alternative funding source was subsequently approved for the Gateway Center on agenda item number 21977 at the February 20th, 2024 administrative meeting utilizing behavioral health fund balance. Therefore, staff is requesting that this funding be redistributed to another eligible ARPA project initiative. Item number two is approves $3 million of ARPA money for NI-20 atrium renovations specifically for the Emergency Operations Center and the Security Office Center in accordance with expenditure category 1.14, which is public health, other public health services. The renovations will allow for more efficient coordination to respond to emergency situations such as natural disasters, public health crises, and synchronized security efforts. In addition, Burnaleo County will be better able to support the responding fire departments, sheriff's office, and public works department so that they can provide the necessary response to the community and the residents of Burnaleo County. The Emergency Operations Center is an eligible enumerated use under this expenditure category as a capital expenditure. Finally, the third motion is to approve ARPA funds in the amount of $316,000 for NI-04-6 for the Clean Team Scrap Tire Program in accordance with expenditure category 6.1, Revenue Replacement Provisions of Government Services. This funding will allow Burnaleo County Public Works to purchase the necessary equipment in conjunction with landfill tipping fees to address the increased problem of illegal dumping sites throughout the unincorporated area of the county for the foreseeable future. The equipment will increase the county's ability to remove tires from arroyos and sandy areas with equipment designed to navigate these types of terrains. Additionally, this project is vital to Burnaleo County's commitment to provide its citizens a cleaner and improved environment by eliminating pollutants from our waterways and removing vector harboring sites. I will stand for questions.
Thank you. Ms. Benavides, any questions? Commissioner Olivas.
So first of all, with, with this item, I'd like to request that, that we consider each of these motions individually, so as items one, two, and three. So I had the, the opportunity to tour the atrium yesterday, thanks to Chief and, and our, our DCM of Public Works, along with Madam Chair, and, you know, I have to say, this, this is a tricky one. You know, there, there are clearly some really important functions of county government that are, that are happening in this facility. But that being said, this, this facility is actually in, in relatively good shape. And I say that from the perspective of, of thinking about what ARPA means, right? ARPA is American Recovery Act, right? This is about recovery from COVID and building, you know, resilience in our community. And, you know, we've, we've used ARPA funds for some really important things, you know, water projects and community centers, buying fire trucks, you know, really frontline services that, that affect the, the public, that the public sees and that really supports, you know, the, the important work that we do here at the county. And I'm just concerned because, you know, what, what this is not doing is showing us the full picture here, and, and that's, you know, kind of my, my first issue here is that this is actually a 15 million and some change project, and, and the cost of that could escalate in the current construction environment. And, and, you know, one of the things that we were told, this is far before my time in county government, was, you know, that this building right here was going to lead, you know, it's a very large expense, would be more expensive now, that this building was going to lead to this consolidation of county government. And to some extent, it, it really has, you know. Commend the county manager's leadership on that. We've, we've closed a few sites and, you know, have been able to, to consolidate some functions. But, you know, this is really kind of the, the opposite of that, you know, doubling down on kind of a, a far-off satellite site that, you know, I think is, is very functional as, as it stands. And I'm concerned that, that we're not making good on that promise that was made to the public about consolidating facilities and that we're not hearing the, the needs of our community. You know, we were told a couple of weeks ago in one of our budget workshops, we've got a nearly $10 million deficit in our fleet, you know, where we need new vehicles, replacements for everything from heavy loaders to fire trucks, sheriff's vehicles, that kind of thing. You know, those are, those are really important. We've heard from our firefighters about the condition of their fleet and their needs and, you know, the, the need to, to really update and upgrade those capital resources. And so I'm, I'm just concerned that we're looking at this as $3 million, and, and perhaps, I think if this was a $3 million renovation, I would support it because that's probably reasonable for the condition of the facility and, you know, the, the, the location and, you know, some of the upgrades that, that may be needed. But when you're really looking at what we're doing here is approving close to, you know, what could be in excess of $15 million and more. And I'm really concerned about the message that sends to the public, to, to our counterparts in the community, that, you know, there are really a lot of unmet needs, housing, environmental problems, behavioral health, needs at our jails. We operate two of them. And I just want to make sure that we're, we're really thoughtful about where these resources go. I want to commend the staff that has put together the plans here, you know, the, the drawings and schematics and stuff have been shared with us. It's clear that, you know, a really good plan has been drawn up here to, to really make the best and, you know, a, a really nice office building here. But I'm just concerned that that is, should be fairly low on our, on our priority list as far as meeting those other core needs of government before we move to, to really making, you know, nice office spaces, which I, I wish that we had the resources to do all of that. You know, I wish we had the resources to buy that, that fleet need and invest in our firefighters and invest in this, this office building and do more. You know, we've got community centers, we've got parks, we've got roads. I mean, DCM Archeletta, when I came on, what is there, a $500 million deficit in basically unmet road needs? And, you know, that's, that's a, that's important. And so I just feel like, like I said, if this was $3 million alone, I, I could probably support it. But we really have to look at the whole picture here, and for, for that reason, I, I can't support this project.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, it is my understanding that when we received the proposal, we were specific in saying the only thing that ARPA allowed for us to do was to pay for any type of renovations at the Emergency Operations Center and the Security Office. Those are specific in the final rule that it calls it out because this is an integral part of what happened during COVID, obviously, with the Office of Emergency Management. That is why it's an enumerated eligible use. It is my understanding, but I will defer to DCM Archeletta, that this is going to be done or could be done in a phased approach.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas.
Madam Chair. Just a moment.
Can I add another question for clarification to clarify Commissioner Olivas's valid points is the, the needs that we do have, yeah, can you explain also if this money could be used to any of those needs? And if so, why wouldn't we use those funds to that? If not, why this proposal?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, we are planning to come forward in the next April meeting with some funding for fleet. We did work with the fleet department, and we are planning on coming forward with some ARPA funding that we had identified to purchase some fleet. So that one is being addressed.
And if I might add, that can only come from revenue replacement, which was a calculation that was done at the beginning of the ARPA funding request, where we calculated lost revenue. That totaled $17 million that you could use for general government services, and that's where fleet is purchased from, and that's where that would come from. ARPA clearly said, talks about improvements to or construction of emergency operations centers and emergency response equipment. Now, I know that it's piecemeal, but we were trying to get this clear because they're going to be coming forth with an agenda to move forward with the renovations at the atrium. So it was a matter of getting this money clear to go with the additional money that they're going to be requesting to do their construction. But Olivas, you can speak to that.
So with that logic, Madam DCM, we could approve item one for redistribution and wait on the item two for the appropriation of the $3 million of ARPA for the atrium? I have some of the similar concerns that, that mixing the different monies and it puts us at risk with the ARPA funding that is specific and, you know, purposeful for.
Correct. And the only reason we were bringing the ARPA force now, we were trying to keep, just for transparency and reporting purposes, keep all of our agenda items that relate to ARPA on the same. But we could, you could put the, we could put this ARPA particular one on the agenda that they're going to be bringing forth so that you would have all the funding sources, yes.
And, and, yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, Commissioner Benson, I was going to actually, DCM Reagan kind of beat me to the punch on that explanation. This is one piece, as we're trying to stretch the dollars, as Commissioner Olivas mentioned, we're, we have a huge unmet need from infrastructure, and the infrastructure not only includes the roads, but includes our facilities that were required to, to house our operations. And as such, where we look to, as we're funding projects, we look to maximize all eligible funding requirements as it comes in. And as, as this one came up and we had some, there was, there was some capacity in the ARPA project, we looked at all of our projects to see where we could put the ARPA funds. As we know, as we spoke a nu, number of times, to utilize the ARPA funds, we have to obligate those funds by the end of this year. So one of the things that we've done is because the infrastructure projects have a lot of lead time, we've gone through our inventory of projects, what we have in development, what we have ready to go, and what could be obligated completely and fully by December 31st of 2024, this project came on the list. And we went through the, the scope of the project, identified what we were doing in, in the atrium project, and identified that these expenses that total about the $3 million that we're requesting are eligible for this. And the idea is, is the last thing we want to do as a county is leave any money, any of this ARPA dollars on the table. And the longer we kind of draw out this process, the more we're getting closer to this deadline. So it, it was the recommendation of not only the finance department, but the public works department, that this one meets the needs, we can make it on there, we can get it obligated, you know, pretty much below, you know, under the deadline, and, and we're coming up on that. That was our, that was the reason for this. To address the Commissioner Olivas's, is question and comment regarding, call it consolidation of our offices. Yeah, we did build, we have this, our, our headquarters here, but we've already meet, reached our capacity. And so one of the things that we do try to do is the services that we try to keep here in Alvarado Square are those that are, for the most part, the heavy public-facing ones where they can do the one-stop shop in here. We, we walked you through a couple of the public-facing services that we provide at the atrium, and those are fairly independent. Those don't require them to come here for something else with it. And those are the reasons we, we try to keep that. We have a good building, like we mentioned during the tour. That building has good bones. The structure is good. It is just an older building. It was built in the early to mid-'80s, so it's due for some upgrades, just simply due to systems, due to code requirements and such. But this is one where we can take the existing inventory that we have for a more minimal amount than buying a new facility or buying another facility and trying to upgrade it. We can do this, and it can economically stretch our footprint and still provide the mission and keep those services that are interrelated and. and keep those services that are interrelated and consolidated or that can be consolidated and interrelated together, even though it is not on the same campus or it's not, you know, near quick walking distance or from our headquarters, it is still functional and it doesn't require the, the, the offices that are there don't require these kind of day-to-day in-person operations or, or, or meetings that we have, like that benefits us all being here at Alvarado Square. So as we look at this from the facility standpoint, this, we consider this a good investment of stretching the existing resources that we do have, upgrading them and still providing the services that we need.
And in our meeting, and then I'll pass it on to Commissioner Barboya, you talked about a, it's a facelift or it's a, it's a, but $15 million and it might not be enough. And that's my concern and we're attaching ARPA money to it. And, and I asked the question, where does the other 12 come from? And I've, have you enumerated that and I haven't seen it? Maybe that's, that's my concern.
Madam Chair, I don't have those numbers on, on hand, but we do, it's a mix of public safety bonds, it's a, it's some general fund monies that have there, and then we do have a couple of other grants that are supporting that. But right now, based on the estimate, we do have the full amount with a, with a, a moderate contingency that if we do get this funding, we can bid a complete project. Really, the only risk that we have on this one is, as, as we've kind of enumerated a number of times, even delaying a month or two can cause us to eat into that contingency we have there. So, you know, this is one of the reasons we come kind of, coming with urgency is if we can kind of get this, we have this right now fully funded, if we can bid this within the next four to five months.
Commissioner Barboya. Yeah, I guess, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for bringing these forward. And I, I guess I just wonder how things pop up in the priority. I, I feel like the, and I appreciate, and I've been here since the ARPA dollars were first distributed and at first we were told certain things only and then expanded. I didn't, I, I too, I think maybe I need a, a briefing on like what it means when we, when I first came on, we talked so much about consolidation and I think that's what you're addressing now, that we do have a few buildings still that are outside of just Alvarado Square. I think maybe I need to really understand what it means when we're saying, yes, we consolidated, but we still have these few operational places. I know there's a couple of buildings that we've held on to for the reasons that you've explained. Maybe I need to understand that greater. But the hard part for me is that I think that ARPA funds, I know we have a staffing problem and that is often used as the reason for why things have happened at YSC or at MDC. But I also know that, you know, one of the employees there was telling me that they don't have working radios, they don't have working ra, a radio system that works in between them. To me, that should be a priority. I think some of the things we've heard about cameras and other things within the facility that I, that to me, those things should take priority over a, a building that is, I, I love that building. When I was a young person, I trained as a rec leader there. I think it's a beautiful building that we should hold on to and make sure isn't falling apart. But I also, I really feel this need for, like when we talk about public health and safety and especially when we talk about what ARPA dollars were meant for, is to get to that place of, you know, that miss that we're, that we continue to, I don't want to see us struggling for fighting for walkie-talkies or whatever radio system they need at the, at YSC when we have something that we could cover that with. So.
And.
And I guess I just want to also say, like, I know we talked, like you referred to the, like the fleet is getting covered, but I think to Commissioner Olivas's point, it wasn't just fleet, right? Like we're naming all these things that could be a priority and, and how does, how does one make it on the priority list when we know we have several things that might be ARPA available?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboya, the priority list on ARPA, we do have a, a ARPA standing committee that's made up of a number of the DCM's department directors that are, that kind of covers, that cover the areas that are, have eligible expenses on there. That committee does, you know, we've been meeting consistently every other week since we had the ARPA funding, since we developed the initial list. And what we do in there is as, as the projects that are, were initially vetted continue to move forward or have delays, and this is where we end up with some of the money that was previous designated here, there's a delay that something came up and they're not going to make that December 2024 deadline. This is when the, the shifting needs come in. And so right now where we're at is we have a number of qualified expenses and at this point, the priority is really coming down to what will be able to make the obligation deadline in this. So as we're shifting around, we're looking for some of those, you know, if there are programs that don't require any sort of lead time or design like an infrastructure project is, those will, will rise up higher and quicker on the list and we try to get those and clear them off as we can. But if we're looking for anything that's infrastructure-related, we do look now to see what is the schedule, where's our critical path and can we make it? And then Chief can address the walkie-talkie issue. And, and just for the sake of kind of promoting what's in the atrium, the radio shop that does outfit, maintain and keep those running is located in, in the atrium and they are one of the areas that does need additional space. And this is part of the, this, they're part of the improvements that we are doing at the atrium is to create that. I'd also just like to just make a, a statement for the record, what we're doing here is not a facelift. We're bringing this into code, we are actually reallocating space. It's going to require, what we're doing in this is actually designing the space to be better used for this as, as the, the chair and the vice chair saw, we did show them that a lot of the, the construction in the offices that are in there doesn't meet current fire code, which is bad because it does have the, house the fire department and the, and the fire marshal's office, but simply the fact that a lot of our, our office walls don't go all the way to the roof in there, there's some of these corrections that need to be made regardless of whether or not we're redesigning to better seat meet the needs of the offices that are in there and provide better and more efficient office flow. One of the things that I'll reiterate to the entire board that we did to the chair and the vice chair as we were walking through there yesterday is that we are applying the space allocation standards that we did here in Alvarado Square. So we're going into a, a more cubicle-based space to maximize what we're, maximize the space that we do have there. So where, where we may have a certain number of employees that are there now, we're able to vastly increase the number of offices that are there simply by this renovation.
And if I might add before Greg talks about the radios, which we do have a priority, but when the ARPA funding came, it came on the, the heels of the CARES funding. So I went to the county manager and said, we can receive an allocation, a direct allocation to help Bernalillo County citizens and, and the county. At the time when the, when the funds were issued, the two areas that they were very clear on upfront out of that 400-page document, primary document, was that infrastructure. So we looked at the county's CIP plan and all of our bond projects and we immediately put our heads together to say, what can we do that would provide the most benefit to Bernalillo County and its citizens in terms of, most of our construction projects, we have GO bonds, which have a limited amount of money that we can do, we batch with federal grants, and what else can we do? So when we're short, then we use general fund, fund balance to offset some of those, but that takes a little bit longer. We do capital outlay, we do everything we can to maximize the funds. So when ARPA came along and we found out that we could offset some of these things, we started investigating. So ARPA is not just about qualifying even as an emergency operation, which is a, a direct thing that they've laid out here as a criteria. It also has reporting requirements and it's heavily into the procurement code, into auditing and being able to do reporting and tracking. And, and so we put a team together that it consists of my, my admin folks, Denise and her, and Jenny and before Audra got here, others, myself. We have procurement, Lisa Sedia White, all of her team, we have public works, we had county legal, we even pulled in our bond council to make sure that we were allocating those funds accurately and appropriately. And because of that, we got a, a clean, single audit on that this past year. So in terms of priority, we really worked with what we could do things. Now, we've been working on, because the deadlines are fast approaching, it has to be encumbered by December 31 of 2024 and the projects have to be completed December 31 of 2026. So we had tied up a lot, partnering with the, we reached out to the city, that didn't work, we partnered with the Water Utility Authority. So we have even a team there that meets by monthly to monitor the projects, the 10 projects that they have going on. So we've spent a lot of time trying to be diligent and transparent with all of our reporting and, and how we assign the dollars. To your point, we are down to the point where we're looking at, we're going back out because we assess the projects all the time, we're saying, okay, these ones aren't going to complete, we're pulling money back, but it has categories, so you can't, I would love to do the 8 million fleet, I don't even know that we could get it all in in time to close the PO, so probably wouldn't work, but, just because of the backlog. But we've been pulling back and then trying to stay within those categories to see what we can do. We're working on a list now of coming back to the full commission to say, these are the projects that are not going to qualify, so we're pulling these dollars back. Here are some eligible things that we have for you guys to decide how you might want to put that together and apply those dollars.
Good, I'm really looking forward to that list, Shirley. And I know that you guys have been very diligent and, and working really hard on that. And I'm, I, I too, you know, I'm, I'm looking at that tick-tock, tick-tock of the end of this calendar year, so we're with you, I think, on, on making sure that we, we, we come back. That's really important. Piecemealing, I think you mentioned, sometimes we have to speed up certain things, but I think we do also need that, the full picture. I'm really looking forward to that.
And Madam Chair, I would like to point, part of this prioritization process is earlier in the year, we worked through this, through, through those committees with Chief Pettis and were able to reallocate some of those ARPA funds and we bought four apparatus for fire. And that was pretty much, we bought the inventory that was available, that we could go in and pick up and get ordered in there. So that, that, that's an example of how this prioritization works and how kind of real-time we are with a lot of this, this situation. So we were able, in, in those motions through that committee to reach out and say, here's an eligible expense, we did have, we had a need in, in fire. And so we reached out to Chief Pettis and his team and they went out, bought quotes and said, here's what we can purchase, what can be delivered. And that was one of the big things, is what can get delivered with that. So, I mean, that's a, that's a good example of the work that we try to do here with, with that committee.
And I would say that we're going to continue to do in these next few months, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you. Mr. Elias, so just to clarify, because I, through that answer, you answered my concerns. So the 3 million cannot go to the Gateway Center because it just doesn't qualify.
No. Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, no, that's not the, the, we did the feasibility and the analysis and based on that, we recommended alternative funding. And so the gateway was then funded with the behavioral health fund balance. So it wasn't that it didn't qualify.
Okay, thank you. So it does qualify based on the status as being a emergency operations center?
The atrium?
No, the gateway. How, how did that qualify for ARPA?
When we ran the analysis, it's because it's temporary housing. It's a temporary housing facility, so it fell under that.
Thank you, okay. So ultimately, that's my question is, this is, this is available money and so there was other funding that could go towards the Gateway Center, so this now is available. And if we could put it towards roads, I'd be front of the line screaming for that for my district, either Paradise Hills or North Alpecurki Acres or San Diego Heights, Tierra Monte, but it's just not. And, and then if we split that up, that would be 600,000 for each district, which covers about half mile of road. Whereas this is a project that if we don't use it towards this, we still have a building that needs to be brought up to code at some point, which then, then that's the other decision we have to make is, do we want to use the available funding to decrease the burden to the county or not use this and increase the burden to the county, which is an increased burden to the, to our local taxpayers? Because we're going to have to take care of it anyway, one way or another. And so ultimately, then if, if it's not to this, it has to go to something else that is applicable on the wish list and we, when we're down to a deadline. So, yeah, I think this is a good use for it. It does meet some of your needs, not the walkie-talkies themselves, but the, the department that's managing it. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good use of the funds that are available now for a limited time.
Commissioner Olivas.
I just wanted to respond. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Barboya. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, to that point, Commissioner Benson, I, I hear it and I guess when I'm, like, I felt that it wasn't, the needs haven't been brought up even in the initial process, that we have a, that's only been discovered and pressured through public process, right? We have a, a faulty equipment that, that means that we have to do strip searches on youth that are pre-adjudicated, we don't have functioning walkie-talkies. And if those ha, or I don't, I think they're called walkie-talkies, right? Excusing my language, but a radio system so that the few staff that we have, while we're very understaffed, can't accurately communicate to each other. This is what I'm hearing from staff there. And we've seen in the news, right, that we have a, a, a thing that's supposed to not make young people have to go through strip searches. And we've known for years that it hasn't been working and it's been in the news for years. And yet it wasn't on the list of, of equipment under these emergency detention facility needs. So that's what worries me, is that it's not being brought in the first place. And then, and then we're having to scramble to say, okay, well, let's find a project that makes the fit. That's what it sounds like to me. It sounds like maybe that's not what.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboya, this, the SOC and EOC were identified a long time ago, we were just waiting for all the plans to get finalized. Commissioners Baca and Olivas reprioritized some of that funding that was, that we had initially set aside and reserved for this, for this purpose.
The atrium?
For the atrium, yes. But we were still waiting on Public Works to finalize their drawings and they were also finalizing the, the funding sources that they needed. So at one point, it was re, the money was reprioritized and Gateway and some other things were prioritized as items that could potentially be looked at. So it, it's not really a last minute, this is really my third time bringing it back. Now, I, I agree with Commissioner Baca that we could bring it back on the, the agenda item where they're going to be bringing, when they're getting ready to go for their RF opt-to-bid, because that's when we usually appropriate funding, when we, we put it all on the same agenda item. I just always like to keep ARPA separate because it makes it easier for audit purposes and, and that's why we were bringing it back. And that's also why I separated it into three different motions, the piece on the gateway because we had taken care of that separately. When, once you guys obligate money or approve it for a specific purpose, we have to come back to you because that was our commitment that we made to the commission that had some of you as part of it and the other commissioners at the time that we set the money up back in 2021, when we, when we got the funding, that we would bring it back. So because we, we were bringing it back so we could put it back in the pot to stir it up again and see what might meet the criteria. And that's when now we're looking at other things. So I don't like to give money back. I didn't give a penny of CARES back. I don't want to give a penny of ARPA back. So we're down to these timelines, so I'm saying, here's a chunk that we could put out the door. Our folks are in charge of it, we know it meets all the procurement requirements, all the federal procurement requirements, which are even more tedious. Lisa's shaking her head.
I think, um.
And then they said they can meet the deadline, so.
Yeah. I think Madam County Manager, Deputy County Manager, is that the question is also one of, is this the highest priority for ARPA? That's what we've continued to, to ask. So I just, you know, it's not willy-nilly that we are prioritizing this.
No, no.
So, you know, I know you're not saying that, but I just want to, you know, that's our reasoning.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you. And I just, you know, I want to go back to where I started here, we keep talking about the $3 million and I, you know, I realize that's the item here, but we're not talking about the project in context of the whole. And I said early on, that is my bigger concern here, is the. And I said early on, that is my bigger concern here, is the overall project cost and the fact that we're considering this on a piecemeal basis. I don't think that's a good way to set fiscal policy. And I definitely don't think that's a good way for us to prioritize whatever the number is that we have of ARPA funding left. I don't know what that number is. It, it hasn't been presented to us. Um, but, you know, clearly your staff is doing those evaluations to figure out which projects may work, which projects aren't going to meet those deadlines. And I think we need, I've said this before, we need to look at this in whole. We need to look at the whole atrium project, and we need to look at the whole ARPA funding. Not just, you know, we want to do this one small piece. And it's not clear to me here, you know, we've said that this is for the emergency operations center, but this says public health and other public health services is the expenditure category. That's why it was being used for the Gateway Center, uh, for the public health purpose. So, you know, clearly there are other uses that this could be committed to, given the kind of broad nature of that category. And I just think it's important that we look at the whole picture here, uh, and really decide, is this a, a mission critical project? If it is, how much should really be committed to that? And, and, you know, um, I just think that, that we need to be looking at the whole picture here and not just at one small piece of the, the whole puzzle. And, you know, I, I don't think this, this discussion has, has really changed my thinking on that. We're, we're still talking about $3 million. This is not a $3 million project. This is not, we're not, we're not, the, the RFP, which hasn't gone out, which will ultimately determine the cost of the project, includes three floors of renovations. It includes landscaping. Uh, it's, this is just a piece of that. And we need to look at the whole thing and ask, as a commission and as management, is this the highest and best use of our money? And the last thing I want to say is about the general fund money, that is not part of this discussion. But I think we should all realize, general fund money is our most precious resource. It is our most flexible funding, right? Behavioral health funding, still pretty flexible. It has to be spent on behavioral health. General fund, guess what? We can spend that on behavioral health. We can spend it on roads. We can spend it on fire. We can spend it on any number of capital projects. And so I can't remember off the top of my head. I've, I've seen that breakdown on the atrium somewhere of, of what all these, you know, the funding sources are. But there is a significant portion of general fund. I want to say six million, somewhere in there, maybe more, maybe less. Um, we need to be thinking about that. And is that the highest and best use of that funding? And I, I'm not convinced. And, and then the last thing, I, I do want to ask a question on item number three, which we really haven't spent any time talking about, but just where is that money coming from? Uh, where is it being reallocated from? Or, or is it just money that was never allocated?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, um, we, as, as DCM Reagan has mentioned, we, we will be bringing the package as a whole to you for the atrium that'll detail where all those funding sources are as we bring that, like you said, when we're ready to bring it to bid. I think the big question we're asking tonight with regard to the ARPA and the three million is if the, the board is willing to allocate that to the project because we have identified an eligible source. And it goes back to the exact point that you're getting to with the general fund is, that is basically our wild card that we can pretty much put anywhere. So the, the efforts that all of our divisions do, and primarily in this case, the Finance Division, the Public Works Division and General Services, as we're looking to this, is we try to go into the project, identify the scopes that are being addressed in there, apply the most restrictive funds that can be used on that first. So that as we get down to a balance that, if there is a balance at the end of it, that can't be met with any of those restrictive funds either because we've used all the amount that's eligible to be used on that project, or we've used up the entire amount that's just a portion to us that we can use. And get down to the bottom so that when we do address the general fund amount, it is as small as possible. And this is the question that we're bringing to you today is, would you allow us to use these restrictive funds for that portion of the project so that we could reduce the overall burden on the general fund at the end of the project? Now, like you said, it's set up so you can individually vote on the actions. So if you want to see that piece as a comprehensive package for the atrium, we will bring that to you as, as soon as we have the final estimate and that we have the, basically the total of the funds that are available to be used for that. And with that, then at that point, we would ask the question. What we were simply wanting to do here is try to get one of those questions answered as early as possible.
Well, I guess to move us off the dime here, I think we've heard sort of the whole conversation. Like, we take these motions one by one. I, I think, number one, we know that we need to approve the redistribution of the ARPA funds that was a three million earmarked for the Gateway. So I'd like to move that forward for that reappropriation.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
You got that one. So move on to number two, approval of the use of ARPA funds, the big question. A three million for the atrium.
I second.
I did not move that. I'm just.
I'll move for approval.
Okay, I'm.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Any further discussion?
I would like to make a, just one last observation, Madam Chair. Thank you. The, you, you two may just decide that the three million should be best used somewhere else. That's fine. And if we can find a good source here in the county for that three million that can be applied with ARPA funds, then, um, that's great, if it benefits the county. But then that still leaves a potentially $15 million project that we now have to pass on to the taxpayers. That will probably go up in price, the longer it gets delayed because it's currently out of code. So I just want to make that observation. Um, I think this is a, a good use of these ARPA funds.
Can I make a comment to that, Commissioner? We, the Youth Services Center has been talked about. We're asking for general fund money for the Youth Services Center improvements that Commissioner Barbo was talking about. So we're always juggling the best and, you know, highest use of the best funding. So that does need to go into our consideration too. So, I mean, if the YSC has a priority, um, now with this immediately, which I think actually, she's made the point to me that I think it does, there, that clears that general fund appropriation that is being proposed upcoming with the 25 budget. So.
And there's been, sorry, Madam Chair. I just think that the MDC stuff now with UNMH and that, there's been a whole bunch of requests because our facility, MDC, previous contractors weren't bringing up the needs. And we've already yet to replace it. But there's a huge need that, um, UNMH is asking for just to get us up to par at MDC as well.
I call the question.
Okay. All those in favor of, um, number two, approval of the three million ARPA funds for the atrium? Say yes or aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No.
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 Item three, approval of the ARPA funds and the amount of 316,000 for the scrap tire program.
I'd move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved on seconded.
Madam Chair, I did still want to get an answer to that question.
I, I was going to answer, I can answer your question. So back in February, I sent you a report because, um, people went out to the Treasury's website and looked at all of the unencumbered items by, by, by counties and municipalities. And we had started, Julie and myself had started receiving requests for money, assuming that we didn't have our money obligated. And so I pre, my staff prepared a report for you all, and I sent it to you. So the 316 relating to Antonio's, um, program was detailed on that report under, uh, lost, under the lost revenue. So we, I went through and kind of showed you what we had obligated and what was, uh, what was encumbered. So there was a $36 million figure. So that we hadn't, didn't have, we had unobligated, and we had 61 million that was obligated. So it was all in that report. And I, I'm happy to sit down with any of you if you'd like to go over it. But Denise can elaborate further. But that's basically where, where it's coming from.
So it qualifies for ARPA because it's lost revenue during the pandemic?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
Well, what, what we did is we had, lost revenue category is saying that you could use it for general government expenditures. So it had a little bit, you had to still follow procurement, but you had to, you could use your government services type things. So this was one, a program that he had identified. Again, we continually vet those things. He had identified it. So when he got his costs together, we were then ready to bring it forth. But I had laid it out as an item. But we tried to bring thorough our best work to you guys as, as we can.
Always.
But to, to be clear, Madam Chair, this, this is basically just funds that were never committed to anything.
No, they were committed to his stuff.
But it's not a reappropriation like the three million that, that we had appropriated.
No, because, correct. Because as we said, whenever, when we did the whole 132 million, we assigned them to different projects. But we said until we vetted those things, they really weren't, we weren't going to move forward until we came back to you for that approval. But we, again, we had to know that we had the money in place so that we could go through the vetting process and then bring it forth, a complete project. And that's kind of where that one is.
Interesting. Thank you.
So I'll move approval of our 316.
We already did.
That was moved?
Yeah, I second.
Okay.
Well, my last comment is just to say that I think the tire thing, right, we have such a huge problem with tires. People are dumping them because they can't afford to do the thing. And we've tried a bunch of ways, thanks to Antonio and the department, to get folks to do it. And I think, let's just pay with it for it because we're saving our environment. So I just, that's why I'm, I would support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Very difficult conversation. But I do think that you heard that what we, what we're trying to do is prioritize, just as you are. And so we would like to see Elias, the, the atrium, you know, line item by line item and, and proposed funding, and also the, our ARPA, you know, where we are, so that we can move that ARPA mu, money forward.
And, and Madam Chair, uh, we, like we said, we're, we're bringing that forward as an agenda item. If any of the commissioners want to see that ahead, because we do have, basically, we're just, we have a pretty tight number. We're just waiting for final 100% design estimate for it. We can bring that to you at any time prior to that.
Thank you, DCM. Thank you.
Thank you.
And final capital improvement program discussion legislative session outcomes. Mr. Weeks and Ms. Court, thank you for your patience.
Sure. I have a very short slide deck for you to help guide the presentation. So I thought, um, a visual would help. We'll just go through the slide deck. Um, I've given you a lot of supporting documents in your packet. Um, so I'll just move through this slide deck and then you can ask questions as you see fit. I'm joined by our state law lobbyist, Dan Weeks, and he's going to be, um, giving you a short overview of HB2, the general appropriations bill, and how it might impact Burnaleo County. And I'm really focused on our capital outlay and, and what happened in the session.
Thank you.
Uh, so first and foremost, um, we had a total of 73 capital outlay projects in our infrastructure capital improvement program. And of these, 52 of those projects were funded. 11 projects received $500,000 or more. And, um, what I'm listing for you here are our top projects with the most money, um, received. And, um, it's really phenomenal. Mesa del Sol, we were looking for 5 million. I remember calling John Barney and saying, are you sure you want to ask for 5 million? I've never seen 5 million provided by lawmakers. And he got more. So I think that's phenomenal. And that just pushes Mesa del Sol forward. Um, our affordable housing, uh, project, this was our, uh, Middle Rio Grande Collaborative. Um, and we did ask for 10 million. We got 1,183,000 dollars from, um, that request. And then you can see the other, uh, three projects that round out our, uh, top, uh, five projects that received funding.
Kathy, excuse me for interrupting. You're going to share this with us, right? Or did you already?
I did. It was part, it was a PDF that I shared with you. Thank you. Yes. And then I gave you an elaborate list. You also have the full listing of every project, what it received and what we requested. Um, the next slide shows you, uh, the outcomes for the nonprofit organizations that we did support in this legislative session. As you know, um, we, we have a very, uh, big process to be able to be fiscal agent to these, uh, nonprofits and their capital projects. Um, these were our top, um, uh, projects that received funding from our nonprofits. Uh, we had 22 of 28 nonprofit organizations that did receive funding. Um, the top one there is Serenity Mesa. They always do a phenomenal job, uh, getting their money, uh, for each session. So they got 1.75 million of their 2.2 million request. Um, the next, uh, the, the next top, uh, project was, um, requested by East Central Ministries. Uh, they put in $2 million requests for, uh, housing and open space acquisition in the International District, and they got 1.5 million. And then you can see, um, we have a safe outdoor space living. Those are basically pallet shelters. That's what that is. That's not the title I would have given it, but that's what Legislative Council Source this does. Um, so that's our pallet shelter request. Um, and then we have, um, affordable housing purchase that was a request made by Yes Housing. And, um, our Veterans Integration Center received 400,000 of their 2.6 million, uh, requests. So those were the top, uh, those were the top projects receiving the most funding for our nonprofit organizations. Um, as I mentioned, uh, Mr. Weeks will give you a little bit more detail. But I did want to highlight for you, um, in HB2, uh, the appropriations that could have a great impact on Burnaleo County. Um, so it's a, it's a very large bill. But, uh, these are just some of the funds that Burnaleo County could tap into either as grants or as a specific project, uh, such as the transportation. This was something different they did in HB2. I'm sure Mr. Weeks will give you more details about that. But they actually, uh, put in a transportation fund of $70 million in HB2, and they identified, uh, several Burnaleo County streets, including Attrisco Vista and Paseo del Norte. Um, and then some Southwest collector, uh, South Valley collector streets. So it's an unusual, um, uh, addition to HB2, but it definitely is going to benefit Burnaleo County and our, and some of our road projects. Um, the Health Authority Department was something, um, that also received more than $100 million. I had to kind of stop. There was just so many lines, so many allocations to the new Health Authority Department. Uh, and then, of course, medication assistance treatment. Uh, our MDC does receive some state funds to help us with MAT programming at MDC. And so here, you've got 3.5 million set aside for medication assistant, assistance treatment, and we'll be benefiting from that for sure. Okay, here's a, here's a fun one, the Grow Fund. Um, this used to be called junior bill funding. Uh, but, uh, at the very last second, uh, lawmakers changed the process. And, uh, in HB2, they set aside certain amounts of funding, um, under what they call a Grow Fund. And all these funds are, um, basically given to mid-region council of governments to serve as fiscal agent. So we have a total of 21 appropriations that actually named Burnaleo County in this pot of, of funding. Um, I'm not sure, we're, we're still working with Mr. Cog. We'll work with them. They know about our process, how we used to vet nonprofits, our RFP, all that good stuff. They know about that. And so the City of Albuquerque and Burnaleo County were just waiting for Mr. Cog to initiate that discussion and figure out how they're going to manage the Grow Funds that were set aside for Burnaleo County. So that's to be determined. So just so you know, our next steps here, um, in May and Ju, or June, uh, the CIP team will be bringing to the commission, uh, a request to approve the budgeting of all the counties' capital outlay grants, because we usually receive all of our county grants, um, in July. It's usually July. It's rare to get them as late as September. So we'll get them all. DFA basically just sends us all of our grants. And so we want to budget those. Um, and we'll be doing that at the June meeting, no later than the June meeting. Um, in September, we're going to be putting out a multi-award request for. Um, in September, we're going to be putting out a multi-award request for proposal for all nonprofits that either A, received funding in this legislative session but did not participate in the multi-award R F P that we did last year, and/or they intend to seek capital outlay funding in the upcoming twenty twenty-five legislative session. Um, in October to November, uh, you will be asked to approve the budgeting of all capital outlay grants for nonprofit organizations and services. And, um, we'll also ask for your approval to award the R F P for nonprofit organizations and services and execute agreements with those nonprofits. And that's because, um, if the process this year is the same as it was in this past, uh, cycle, uh, D F A has changed their process. They kind of, uh, threw us for a loop as well. So I'm trying to conform our process to D F A's process. But basically, what D F A now does is in November and December and May and June of each year, they send out questionnaires to my team, uh, about our nonprofit projects. And so we have to answer questionnaires before D F A decides whether to release grants to us. And so, um, that's why we've pushed the R F P back to September, because we won't see any of the, uh, grants for nonprofit organizations. Um, either in January we start seeing them or in June next year. So, um, that's just how D F A does it, and so we're just kind of conforming our process to that.
Can I just ask a quick question? Are you saying that, um, sorry, just to make sure you understand. You're saying that these two times a year, but that, um, of what, so if, if nonprofits got now in twenty twenty-four were awarded, they won't have access to those funds through our process until January?
That's, yes, that is correct, um, Commissioner Barboia. So D F A really, so D F A had a process by which all of the county local government grants, they throw out, they get rid of them first. They always do that in the summer. Um, for nonprofit organizations, they used to start giving, releasing grants to us in September. But they started this questionnaire process last year. And so now the questionnaires go out, and this used to be a process that they applied to all capital outlay that was funded by severance tax bond sales. Now, D F A has incorporated that process into their own for all capital outlay grants to nonprofit organizations. And so they require me and my team to fill out a questionnaire for every single, uh, capital outlay grant that's intended for a nonprofit organization. We have to answer a lot of questions about project readiness. Can you expend this funds? That kind of thing. They make a determination whether to release the grant to us, and so they release them in cycles as well now. And so, yes, to your point and to your question, um, we'll see questionnaires for the twenty twenty-four. I always call it the class of twenty twenty-four of nonprofits. We'll start seeing questionnaires come to us in November. We answer those questionnaires. We wait for D F A to decide whether they're going to release the grants. We get a memo in January. They release the grants that they're going to release to us, and then we can start working on third-party agreements with those nonprofits whose grants we've received. If we didn't get a grant, it's probably because we couldn't answer project readiness questions, or there was some anti-donation issues that they wanted to, um, address or want to address with us. And so we have to wait till May, you know? So it just kind of continuously goes in that cycle until all those grants are released, and they're satisfied with our answers.
Thank you. Sure. Okay, Mr. Weeks?
I have one other question about your, your previous slide, if I could.
Oh.
On the Grow Fund, um, of the twenty, so the twenty-one appropriations named Burnaleo County, maybe Mr. Weeks has the answer, but that's just, they might be nonprofits, not necessarily, um, Burnaleo County um, of the ones that are Grow Funds, right? Like, did we apply for any Grow Funds, I guess?
So I can tell you, Commissioner Barboia, that we did have a list of nonprofits based on our multi-award R F P last year and based on the conversations I had with nonprofits that came after that R F P. We knew which nonprofits were also going to be seeking junior bill funding. We knew who they were. So when they switched the process on us, I made sure Mr. Cog knew. These are the nonprofits that we were willing to support as fiscal agent if they received junior bill funding. So Mr. Cog had that list of nonprofits, and they were accepting their forms. Um, and, and the way the Grow Fund, and you, I do have a, uh, one of the, uh, attachments for you. You'll see, it's very similar to regular capital outlay, but you'll see there's two hundred thousand here, one hundred and sixty thousand here. That was the cap for each of the projects this year. And so we have about three point seven million in projects under the Grow Fund. They do name Burnaleo County, but I really can't tell.
They're coming to the county in some way. Not to, not to the government.
I'm not quite sure how the Mr. Cog is going to want to work their process, although they did like our multi-award R F P process, that's for sure. And we're willing to assist them. So it'll really be up to Mr. Cog as fiscal agent to determine what they want their process to look like to distribute the Grow Fund. And, you know, they're getting Grow Funds, not just for Burnaleo County.
Yeah.
For Sandoval, Torrance, all the Mr. Cog county entities, all of them had projects in the Grow Fund. And so they're overseer of all of that.
Thank you so much, and I just wanted to thank you so much during, I know things were moving fast and that shift that happened overnight to Grow Fund, and thank you for really making sure the projects that we knew were going to be going for junior bill were listed in that. I saw it for my own eyes, and I know you worked super fast to make that happen, so thank you, um, Director Court. Or, um, I always forget all the titles. Your title, Court. And, um, that, that was really, that really helped a lot of our, our folks, their seeking funds and that got approved for Grow Funds, so thank, and that, as I understand, and just for everybody's knowledge, that they, the idea, I think, behind it, and maybe others can correct, is, um, that they'll get two years funding. If they got those, they'll get two years funding. At the end of those two years, it's possible that they could be put into the New Mexico recurring state budget. That's how I've heard it, which sounds like a huge opportunity for some of our folks that are always coming to us for funds. If they could get directly into the state funding, that's amazing.
You are correct. Junior bill funds had a one-year expenditure deadline. And those are always very difficult for us, because we're not getting an executed grant till November, and we've got to spend it by June the following year. So these Grow Funds do allow for two years of spending, and that does give us a little bit more time to spend the funds. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, my name is Dan Weeks. I'm your lobbyist. Been your lobbyist since nineteen ninety. I know I don't look that old, but. Uh, one of the items that I wanted to go over with you tonight, and Kathy did a good job on the, uh, capital outlay. A couple of things I'll just say about capital outlay is the process is probably one of the most Byzantine processes that I've ever seen, uh, in government. And, uh, there are a lot of people who have tried to change it over the years, make it a little bit more logical, uh, spend the money better. One of the things that's out there now is we have five point two billion dollars in the pipeline. And that, that's a result of not being able to finish projects that are partially funded. Uh, and some of those projects get reverted after a couple of years, after their authorization goes away. So there is a, some appropriation that went to the Department of Finance and Administration to, to, to set up an infrastructure division within D F A. And I think this will go a long ways to making the process much more logical, much more reasonable, and much more effective over time. So at, at some point in time, uh, we'll be working more closely with the D F A in developing our recommendations to make sure that what we're asking for is going to be followed through and fully funded, so we can get, uh, things in, in the ground. I will say this, there's a lot of criticism about a lot of local governments that don't follow through and don't get the projects done. Over time, we've been really diligent in the, in Burnaleo County to try and get the projects finished as soon as possible. But we still have a lot of them that are out there just kind of hanging fire, because either the bids come in way too high, which has been a real problem with highway projects, because asphalt and other oil-related pro, uh, products are very, very expensive right now. But anyway, um, we do need to work more closely as this infrastructure division comes online uh, to see what we can do to improve the overall project and be part of it and not be a problem, in terms of, uh, the prospective, uh, application of, of capital outlay. The other good thing is no severance tax bonds to speak of this year. The legislature decided not to issue very many severance tax bonds and not to incur debt, because we have so much general fund available. Makes no sense to go and borrow money and pay interest on that money when we have a tremendous amount of, of, uh, general fund dollars that are, are, are not being utilized or in surplus situations. So, anyway, I'll get off of, uh, capital outlay. I think we've done a good job with it. We got funded fairly well. Uh, the nonprofits got funded fairly well through the Grow Program, which was, uh, a curveball high and inside that was thrown at us after the legislative process actually began. So I appreciate the fact that Mr. Cog stepped up. Mr. Cog is getting money to administer this, so I don't think they need to come look to the county. There's a four and a half million dollar appropriation in House Bill Two. Uh, about two million dollars, I believe, is scheduled to go to Mr. Cog, because they have, uh, one of the largest lists of, uh, Grow monies that they're going to be administering. So don't worry too much about the fiscal situation from Mr. Cog. I think they'll be, they'll be okay. One of the things that after the session, I started looking at House Bill Two, and I'll tell you, the House Bill Two is a three hundred-page bill this year. It's got a lot of stuff in it that's never been in there before. The Grow money is in there. There's, uh, a lot of appropriations that go directly to the agencies in the form of the creation of what they're calling, in most cases, an expendable trust. One of the first expendable trusts I worked on, uh, along with John Arthur Smith and, and Governor Lujan Gresham, was the child, early childhood trust fund, the unexpendable, uh, trust fund. That sort of opened the door for the legislature to create these trust funds or expendable trust funds with some of the, uh, general fund balances that we have out there. Tremendous amount of general fund balances. So we now have trust funds for legacy. That's an outdoor recreation situation. We have, uh, just about seven or eight very large, multi-hundred-million-dollar types of trust funds out there, which is great. We don't want to spend all that money right away. We want to bank it. We want to hide it. We don't want to have to obligate it all upfront. So the bottom line is, it's, it's a good convention and a good thing that they followed in putting these trust funds together. I think it will keep in violet some of the monies that we need prospectively for future, uh, situations that may occur when oil and gas is no longer sort of going crazy like it is right now from a revenue standpoint. Probably have about five or six more years of that before things start going, uh, upside down in oil and gas prices, volume, production cuts, and we're going to have to figure out what to do as a state to fill the, to fill the gap from oil and gas. Anyway, bottom line is, I went through House Bill Two, I think, Kathy, did you include this? So this is in your packet. It's kind of a tedious process, but I think it's something that's very important for the county to know where this money is and to how the agencies, the county agencies and departments, department heads and others, as well as you all, to know where these monies are, because we're going to have to go to the state, and we're going to have to work with state agencies to get these allocations in most cases, because a lot of them are tied up in these big trust funds right now. So one of my suggestions is that when the dust settles here in a couple of weeks, or a month, there's a lot of new people at the state level. There's a lot of new cabinet secretaries that have come in. You all have had some turnover, um, and I think it's really important to schedule some kind of a meeting or a summit or something that you all could get together with the, with the, uh, various state agencies to establish those relationships. We've had good relationships in the past, for the most part, with all the cabinet secretaries. But I think it's really important, uh, to get back in the fold and talk to those people and let them understand that we're available to help, and, and we'll be like, looking to them to make the allocations for the projects that make sense for the county that we want to apply for. So I won't go over this. It's five pages. You can look at it at your leisure. If you're having insomnia, it will probably help. But those are my suggestions, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to represent you in Santa Fe. I think we've done a pretty good job. Kathy's done an excellent job. Um, not having been that familiar with the process before and handling all of these, uh, sort of late coming revisions, if you will, um, to the process itself.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks.
The other thing I'd like to suggest is that you put your resolutions together a little earlier.
Yeah.
Commissioner Olivas and I were talking to a le, legislator whose name will remain anonymous, but he gave us what's for and all about for not being there to talk to him about a, uh, capital outlay project three or four months before we were up there to talk to him. So I would really strongly encourage you to, to do as much as you can and adopt your resolutions a little bit earlier and give us a little time. The other problem we had was, on the substantive or policy resolution, there were a lot of items in there that were not germane to a short session. And I did talk to the governor's office to try and get messages for some of those. And her philosophy this year was very few messages, just basically emergency types of things that she was willing to provide a message for. So those recommendations were dead in the water, just to start with. So we need to, to, to be cognizant of that and, and not, uh, not ask for stuff in a short session that we know probably not going to, going to happen, so.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks, and thank you, Ms. Court. Really appreciate, uh, everything that you do. It's, it's, uh, amazing. Uh, Mr. Olivas and then Mr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I wanted to just say, make a couple of statements. Uh, we got fifty-two projects funded, which is, you know, out of seventy-two. That's a good thing, but I say that with an asterisk, because, um, you know, I've taken a lot of heat up here for advocating for shorter list. And I think this is vindication that a shorter list continues to be the fiscal policy that we should pursue. Because, yes, we get fifty-two projects funded, but we contributed to that five point six billion dollar backlog, because we have projects on here, I'm not going to go back to the list here, but where we got a hundred and fifty thousand on a one million dollar request. And that's not even clear that that was the whole need of the project, right? That was phase one or phase, you know, whatever. It may not, that million dollars, even if we got it, may not do the whole phase. And so I think it's really critical that, that we take a more, um, surgical approach here, as, as I've been advocating now over two capital outlay cycles, that I know we want to put every project on there, and every neighborhood's park is important. But at the end of the day, we get no parks if we fund all of them ten percent, right? Nothing gets built. If we ask for one park in each district, or however you want to do it, or make a priority list and say, these are the four that, that we can actually get the funding for this year based on the legislators, the other funds committed. Taking that more surgical approach is going to allow us to churn through this list a lot faster and not have projects sitting here getting reauthorized or, or God forbid, reverting. So I just, you know, I'm going to continue to, to hammer that every year, that, that, that this list needs to be shorter and more targeted. We know that each of us, our areas are population-wise basically equal, which means we basically each have the same number of senators and, and representatives. They have limited resources that they can allocate to these projects. And so, you know, when we ask for too many projects in one area, I mean, I took a hit in my district, right? I took projects off of my list. I still didn't get my projects fully funded, even with a shorter list. And so, you know, it, it just takes, it takes me back to, we have to double down on that, really being thoughtful. It's going to require all of us to make sacrifices, right? To say, you're not going to get every project you want on that list. That's okay, because you might get more projects done. And then in the long run, you know, we reap the benefits of that. The other thing I wanted to say is, I, I wanted to say that I really want to personally thank the governor. Doubt she's watching, but, um, we got a lot of money from the governor. I believe that Mesa del Sol allocation, I think that five million was her, and the forty thousand was, you know, legislators that stepped up. In my district, it's not on our list because it was a water authority project. Uh, we got two million dollars for water in Karnwell because of the governor. And so I want to express my, my great thanks to her for stepping up for our community, for Burnaleo County, and supporting some of these projects, because our legislators step up, but so does the governor, and, and she did this year. Um, and the last thing I wanted to just say was, just to point out to everybody here, the match fund. I think the match fund is a really important thing that we don't forget about. Uh, Representative Dixon, Vice Chair of Appropriations Committee, also a, a member of, of my district, is someone, a constituent, um, and someone I work closely with. She championed that. It's a great idea, uh, allowing us to access more federal funds and, and, you know, fully fund projects, right? I just. I just, it's a good idea and I hope that we utilize it. And I know that Kathy knows about that and her whole grants team. But we just, we got to double down on that and prove that this is a good idea so that we get more.
That's an excellent point, and that's one of the reasons we need to get with DFA. Let them know what we need to backfill some of our projects. And also, the federal projects that get earmarked, that come in, it may not be sufficient to do an entire project. We can always go to the match fund now. So, that's, that's important. So, it's an excellent idea.
Commissioner Benson, then Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, there was actually an article or an opinion piece this morning in the paper, Commissioner, supporting that position, and I agree. I had a question, Mr. Weeks or Ms. Court, I'm not sure which. There was, I saw two different Burnco affordable housing. One for about two and a half million, one for about 10 million. And each of them got a small percentage. The, the two and a half million actually got a much larger percent of their funding than the 10 million requested. What were they and why were they two different, two different capital requests?
I, I can answer that, Commissioner Benson and Commissioners. So, the, we asked for $10 million. That was one of our top 10 priorities, $10 million for the Middle Rio Grande Housing Collaborative. And that received $1,183,000. So, that was our countywide housing priority for Middle Rio Grande Collaborative. And then, the nonprofits, there are a few that asked for housing funding. We had the East Central Ministries asked for 2 million. And I think that's the one you're referring to, 2 million, and they got $1.5 million. And then, we had Yes Housing. They're looking at doing a project and they're working with our Planning and Development Services, our tech services teams. So, they're doing a housing project. They asked for funding, but that's more for the public right-of-way infrastructure needs for that housing project that they own on their land. So, we're doing a lot of the infrastructure work on public right-of-way, so there is no anti-donation issues there. So, we're working with Yes Housing on that one. And then, we had one other group that was looking for some housing. And I can't, I don't even remember what they're using it for. But Heading Home asked for $525,000 for supportive housing purchases and equipment. They got $100,000. So, three housing requests were on the nonprofit side. And then, we had our Middle Rio Grande Collaborative request as a top 10 priority for us.
And the $750,000 for the pallets.
And then, and then we had the pallet shelters. And I put that in the nonprofit. I don't quite know where to categorize that. I just put it in the nonprofit list. But the pallet shelters was our fourth request on that site, the nonprofit site.
But the pallet request wasn't listed as Burnco Affordable Housing.
Our request is the Affordable Housing Construct was what it was titled.
Right.
And I always refer to it as number 588. 588 was ours, the top 10 priority list.
That was the only, that was the only request, if I'm right, that was actual county request, not a nonprofit.
That was the only housing, you are correct. So, we had one housing request on our list of capital projects, and it was number 588 Affordable Housing.
Okay. And other than the $10 million we were asking for, in conjunction with the city, they actually asked for another $10 million under the auspices of the Collaborative, which could not receive the money directly because they're not a legal entity yet because I guess they haven't gone through, run through all the trappings in order to do that and formalize the JPA. Housing was a really contentious situation this year because it was a rollover from last year's issues relative to the governor wanting to take over some of the stuff from the MFA. And so, what ended up happening is we had some compromises. And there's about a $200 million appropriation that's gone to the NMFA through the Opportunity Enterprise Fund, which is now split between commercial and, and, and housing. So, the, the process for housing is going to be changing quite a bit. We're going to have to do some applications to NMFA for the Opportunity Enterprise Fund projects. We're also going to change, we changed legislation to allow you to go and get public project revolving fund dollars, which would have to be reimbursed, but at least you could front-end them. And they'll be at a much lower interest rate than what you could probably get on the marketplace or a commercial developer or residential developer could get on the marketplace. So, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be going on in terms of your preparation and process relative to NMFA. And MFA, and the governor also got some money. She's got about $50 million. $30 million rolled over from last year that they couldn't figure out how to get out the door. And about $25 to $30 million more into the DFA for, for projects that she wants them to do. So, please, get the collaboration done.
Commissioner Weeks, why did, why did Burnley County, our affordable housing request, receive a smaller percentage of the funding than the nonprofits did?
That's lobbying. That's lobbying. I mean, I, I can't really give you a solid answer except that, you know, in my efforts with Mr. Weeks and Jason, Mr. Jason Weeks, you know, we really highlighted our top 10 countywide priorities when we had those quick meetings with lawmakers in the hallways and in their offices. These are our top 10 countywide, top 10 public safety, you know. So, we had them categorized. But we're doing lobbying just for the county. I'm just working on county projects and our nonprofits are out doing the same thing I, I was, the same things that Mr. Weeks was. And, you know, maybe they're more successful getting their money than we are. I'm not sure, but we have more to ask for. I think that's the other thing, so.
I just wanted, if I could, Madam Chair, just to take that comment. You know, that was, we purposefully put it as our number one priority, right? And I was, I assisted East Central Ministries in getting that 1.5 million. And it really is, it's about, you know, they brought community folks. They had an innovative project that was ready to go, and we were able to lobby efforts. It takes time. It takes being up there. It can't, it's not just the one hallway conversation. And I know Mr. Weeks knows that. And I did ask for the county manager to get us a meeting, Mr. Weeks, and also with Jason Weeks, because I don't always want to do these conversations in public. But, you know, I was told by one of the representatives that Mr. Jason Weeks was actually asking for a legislator to not put funds into the number one priority. So, I, I want to follow up to what happened and why that was being relayed, that, that our number one housing priority was actually being told that maybe it would just get sucked up into, into what we were asking for. And that's why that East Central Ministries was really able to come in and say, hey, housing is a priority to every single legislature. And the county has the bulk of the legislators. So, it really wasn't, it was an easy ask. Like, they got that 1.5 million pretty easily. And so, I guess I just, that's, I think there is a difference. I do think Mr. Weeks is right. We need to go earlier and let our legislators know. But to that point too, I think when we're talking about substantial, like, if there were things on our priority list that we're not going to get a message or we knew, like, that's the kind of advice the county needs, right? Like, we, that, hey, these are likely not going to get a message because we're walking into budget session. And it takes a lot to get a message on something. So, if we know we're walking to budget session and our lobbyists can tell us ahead of time, like, hey, these are likely to budget session, these aren't ones that you want to go for this year, then that, that information would also help, you know, ahead of the legislative session so we can take them off our list and not have things that aren't going to be likely and not have you working to try and get a message on something that's not likely going to happen.
That reiterates my point about getting things out a little earlier because your resolution was adopted on December 15th. The legislature started on January 17th, and that's during the holidays. So, it's really, really difficult to get in and talk to somebody.
We're going to fix that this year.
Well, I mean, even if, I think, like, that's the point, is that lots of times we don't even, like, if, if the county was unaware that those things that would need messages and aren't, that we could have pulled them off in December or even before we proposed them. Kathy Court could have known, hey, it's a budget year. These are likely aren't even going to go forward. Let's just explain that to the commissioners and to the county. Then, we walk in with a smaller, more viable list because we're not, you know, needing to work. We're not asking for things that aren't likely going to even be considered.
One other point of information. If you all want to know who among the legislators gave what to what projects, that's posted now on the legislative website. It's under the capital outlay bills, and I think it's titled something like sponsored, funded by sponsor. So, you can go in there and see.
And thank people, right?
Yes, the ones that told you they were going to do something and didn't do it or the ones that did something and didn't really tell you they were going to do it. So, it's important to do. And it's very important to do that with the governor too. We went in and talked to the governor earlier. You know, I know that county manager was in talking to her earlier about some of the projects too. So, I think that's one of the things that ended up with Mesa del Sol and the Sweet Sholder. The governor took money away from that project two years ago. And I reminded her that I thought that should be a loan. Maybe she should give it back now.
But then, yes, she did. Commissioner Benson.
We're lucky to get that from her and we appreciate it.
Mr. Weeks, can you explain what Commissioner Barboa said that Jason was telling the legislators that our top priority was not important?
I'm not aware of that. That's not something I discussed with him. It's not something I was aware of. So, he may be my son, but he kind of does his own thing. So, if that's the case, then that's, that's problematic.
If I may, that's not my understanding, and I'm going to, I'm going to respectfully disagree with Commissioner Barboa.
I want to interject too. I don't want to think that we should continue that as an offline conversation and a request has been made for the lobbyist, for the lobbyist to meet with.
I would like to hear her answer. I, this is very conservative.
Yeah, it was a representative, and I, and county manager also, I believe, followed up with the three representatives that had told me about what I considered inappropriate behavior. By Mr. Weeks, I asked for a follow-up meeting. I haven't got it and.
I asked a question and she's respectfully answering.
Okay. Please continue.
All I'll say is that I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Barboa's statement. Mr. Weeks and I worked hand in hand daily. And in fact, he, he called me at one point and said, there is confusion about the affordable, which one is our countywide priority. Will you please send an email? And I did that on a Saturday night. And I sent the email again to all lawmakers saying, you know, these are our top priorities. Number 588 is the county's affordable housing priority. That is our priority. So, and I reiterated that for him because he was trying to set the record straight. What was the countywide affordable housing project that we were seeking funding for? So, that's my understanding, and that's what I did to assist him in, in trying to set the record straight.
Thank you, Ms. Court. So, your understanding is that the written message were, was given, that these are our top priorities?
I, I did, to Mr. Weeks' request, I sent out a mass email to all of our legislative delegation telling them one more time, you know, these are our top 10 countywide priorities. I had them by number and by title so that they, that we could possibly lay the confusion to rest and just reiterate that number 588 was our affordable housing project.
And I will say the conversations I had with legislators that told me that they asked specifically for housing because that was what they cared most about, and they were literally told that it would, that $10 million was just going to suck up and not get enough, and maybe they should prioritize the helicopter. So, I, I, not, it's not my word, a legislator told me that. I referred them to the county manager, so she, so it would just be my word against Kathy's, I guess, or Jason Weeks. And I, I never got a follow-up from that conversation. But I do think, agree, it's problematic if that.
Yeah. Well, ultimately, I trust the written, written communication, but then there's the offline conversations, which that's upsetting too. The, I appreciate you sending out the written communication because that's not a disputable fact if you sent it out.
It's very helpful, yes. Yeah, agree. The written communication is our solid gold and what happens. But that, the relationships and those conversations with legislators is what gets us the funding, right? Because they're relying on, if we're not meeting with them in the interim, then they're relying on, on us, on our lobbyists at that, during that time.
And if I might add, I do agree that we were late this year. I, this was my first time on, in this position, and we were late. And we're not going to be late this coming year. In fact, you'll see an ICIP plan before you in a June meeting. You're going to see a geo-bond package before you at a June meeting with work sessions prior to that so that this summer, we can hold legislative sessions with our lawmakers on various topics. Tours, we're going to give them tours of our top priority projects. We're going to tell them what we're needing in capital outlay. You're going to be very happy with what my team is doing in regards to the SAP accounting system and merging it with CIP data manually this year so we know exactly how much funding each project has received to date so we can prioritize accordingly to the percentage of projects funded. And we're going to be talking to our lawmakers earlier. I've already talked to Representative Garrett about this idea. She loves it. We're going to have a summer session, so June through August. We're going to be meeting with our lawmakers early. We're going to be telling them what our top capital outlay priorities are. We're going to do what Mr. Cogs and other parts of the state do where we sit down and say, how much do each of you want to give to this project to get it to 100%? That's what we're going to do this, this summer. And that way, you have, and then we're, we're going to talk about HB2 recurring funding for the sheriff's helicopter. We're going to tell them that early so that in September, we have a capital outlay resolution that lays out our priorities, our capital outlay priorities. And hopefully, we already have some commitments as to who's going to be funding each of those projects. So, that is my goal this year. I push those deadlines up, pushing in the departments. My, my colleagues have been amazing helping me meet these very, very fast deadlines. So, I'm hoping to see a great improvement on our efforts in capital outlay next year and a more concerted effort.
Thank you, Ms. Court. Thank you, Mr. Weeks.
I just hope that those folks get re-elected.
Yeah, I had one more, just, and this, to me, is maybe a little bit impossible, but I just want to plant the seed so that we think about it. It was brought up in, and Ken, our legal, was there, the Detention Facility Advisory Board. There was a bill, this is one example of probably many, that we may never, ever be able to really predict or figure how it impacts the county, but I do want us to have a thought. So, I think it's SB 271, Senator Ivy Soto's bill, which I think everyone will appreciate. It's trying to close the gap where folks who have been reoccurring, have reoccurring felonies are getting released and not charged on the previous felony. I think that this commission would agree that that's the kind of, the kind of solutions we're looking for to not have people just, that are recommitting felonies back on the streets. But one part about it that I just want us to be aware of, it is going to mean then that more, we are going to have more people at MDC, which I'm not trying to, I'm not against the proposal. I just think of in these ways, how are we seeing? And at the same time, if there was a really good support for that, then how can we ask? Then, we also need the matching support for MDC to hold more folks, right? We should, if the state can pass a bill that says we're going to have to hold more folks, then we should also get, or at least be considered for funding that is going to increase our capacity at MDC because it is a, always a burden for us to hold that capacity. So, I don't know how we do it, and we, when we see those coming, quickly ask for. Maybe now's the time that, you know, it hasn't gone into effect yet. Maybe now we can go to the state and say, hey, this is going to mean we're, I'm not sure what the answer is. I'm just trying to plant the seeds and for our awareness so that we're actually thinking this should be a way that we're leveraging the funding we need at MDC that's going to, with that increased population that we're going to be receiving.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to move on. Thank you all. Announcements of the next commission meeting, Tuesday, April 9th. The zoning meeting at 3:00 PM here in the chambers. And Tuesday, April 9th, administrative meeting at 5:00 PM in these commission chambers. And we are adjourned.